...2013 meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Please turn off your wireless communications as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. Want to thank, on behalf of my colleagues, I want to thank Charles Herbert Flowers High School Choir, under the direction of Mr. Ernest Mitchell, for their choral selections. Please give them another round of applause.[19.14][19.14](APPLAUSE). Also want to thank and congratulate Andrew McLinn, 12th grade student at Charles Herbert Flowers, for his introduction of this evening's board meeting. Ms. Waller, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
To administer that which is just in all educational policies, be ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Ms. Thompson, call the row, please.
Mrs. Beck.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Mrs. Epps.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks.
Present.
Ms. Fellows.
Present.
Ms. Higgins.
Present.
Ms. Waller.
Present.
Ms. Ahmed.
Present.
Ms. Boston.
Present.
Mrs. Jacobs.
Here.
Thank you. Colleagues, at this time, this evening, we have representatives from the Prince George's County Educators Association, Service Employees International Union, Association of Classified Employees, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, and the Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel, in attendance to sign negotiated agreements for our labor organization. At this time, I please call forward Mr. Kenneth Haynes, President of PGCEA, and Mr. Louis Robinson. I call forward Ms. Shirley Adams, President of Association of Classified Employees, Local 2250, and Mr. Daniel Bessick. I call forward Mr. Cornell Reed, President of Service Employees International Union, Local 400, and Mr. William Selman, Executive Director. Mr. James Smallwood, President of Association of Supervisory and Administrative School Personnel, and Ms. Doris Reed, Executive Director. Please come forward for the signing of the labor agreements.
Let me say, on behalf of my colleagues, that while the board has struggled over the last several years, we want our employees to know that we honor the work that you do, we appreciate the work that you do, and we look forward to having continued relationships where we can work together and make sure that we do what's best for kids in our county, and at the same time, make sure that we are giving employees what they need to have a livable wage and do what they need to do for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[293.88][293.88](APPLAUSE).
I thank Mr. Kenneth Haynes and Louis Robinson for the work that you do on behalf of your members, and we know that victory happens in the classroom. I just want to say that every single day, we honor the work that your members do, and thank you for your continued work with the board and our collaboration to make sure great things happens for kids. Thank you.[360.56][360.56](APPLAUSE).
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, once again, I want to thank you, Mr. Reed. The next three, we've known each other for a lot of years, and so I want to say to you that, you know, while sometimes it is difficult to provide the sort of wages that we talk about over the years, but I think the board is moving in a direction where we can see some changes around what's working conditions for employees, and we thank you for all the work that you do in keeping our buildings clean and safe for kids, quite frankly. And on behalf of the board, we really appreciate your work and want you to know that we do care about your employees and your members and our employees. Thank you.[441.28][441.28](APPLAUSE).
Ms. Reed, thank you so much for your work on behalf of your members. We know that our principals are the instructional leaders of the building. They set the tone for what happens in the classroom, they set the tone for what happens in our buildings, and we appreciate them and appreciate the work that they're doing. We know that it's been a difficult time over the last several years, but the board stands in its position, ready to work with you and your membership, and thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of your members.[494.69][494.69](APPLAUSE).
agreement. And let me say, on behalf of my colleagues, that while the board has struggled over the last several years, we want our employees to know that we honor the work that you do, we appreciate the work that you do, and we look forward to having continued relationships where we can work together and make sure that we do what's best for kids in our county, and at the same time, make sure that we are giving employees what they need to have a livable wage and do what they need to do for our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[603.88][603.88](APPLAUSE).
And next. I think it's the blue.
I thank Mr. Kenneth Haynes and Louis Robinson for the work that you do on behalf of your members, and we know that victory happens in the classroom. I just want to say that every single day, we honor the work that your members do, and thank you for your continued work with the board and our collaboration to make sure great things happens for kids. Thank you.[693.12][693.12](APPLAUSE).
Colleagues, on preliminary matters, while we are still setting up, may I please have a motion to adopt the February 21st, 2013 board meeting agenda?
Set. Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Thank you, Ms. Waller. We promptly moved to the second that we adopt the agenda for this evening. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the February 7th, 2013 system oversight meeting minutes? Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Thank you, everybody. We promptly moved to the second that we approve the meeting minutes for the February 7th, 2013 system oversight meeting. All in favor? Any objections? Any abstentions? At this time, we will have a news break. A burning desire to make a difference.
Flowers High School Principal Gorman Brown need not have worried for his safety, for as 20 of the cadets in the county's first-ever fire safety course prepared to extinguish a controlled burn, there was the feeling that the aspiring young firemen were more than up to the task.
You feel ready to do this this morning?
Yes, I do, sir.
What kind of training have you had to get you ready?
We've had a lot of extensive training. We've been doing search and rescue. We've been ventilating. We've been using ladders. We've been deploying hose lines to get ready for this day.
First of all, our training, when they tell us to, before we go in a building, just make sure all your gear is on, make sure no skin is out, period, or you will get burned. That's one thing that PG County always press on us, is that safety first, and everyone goes home.
With instructors close by and nervous parents watching from the sidelines, the cadets carefully covered every inch of their bodies with a fireman's cumbersome suit, secured their life-saving breathing apparatus, and bonded with hugs and high fives as they prepared to fight their first-ever blaze at the County Fire Academy in Cheltenham. A daunting challenge, even for the bravest.
It's going to be a controlled burn, but it's a real burn. How do you feel about this?
Well, I'm not going to lie. I'm just a little nervous, but I know that all the training that we had, we had some really good training. We have some great instructors, so I know we can get through this. It would be a great day.
I told them, take the adrenaline and the fear and use it to focus.
Are you ready to go into that burning building?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Everybody ready?
Yes, sir!
Right. Let's get going. Sir, sir, sir.
Down on their knees and struggling to hold on to the writhing snake of a fire hose, the cadets pushed against a wall of smoke in a room filled with dangerous flames arcing up to the ceiling. But far from intimidated and doing exactly as they'd been taught, the students quickly doused the flames and emerged unscathed, all of which brought relief to the parents and high praise from the fire chief.
How are you feeling about William being in a burning building this morning?
Well, I was scared, but I'm excited at the same time. It's my little boy.
As soon as the water touches the fire, it like completely pitch dark, and you have to find a window to ventilate, so it was extreme.
The first group that went in did exactly what they needed to do. There was one of the cadets who was the one who is probably the tiredest now, was the one who had to pull all that hose at the door, and if you got that on them, having to come back and pull hose and pull hose and pull hose, that person's going to sleep well tonight.
Aiming for national firefighter certification at the end of the county's two-year program, the cadets still have plenty of tests to pass and skills to learn.
This is just what's called our Firefighter One program. So this is coming towards the culmination of that Firefighter One program, where if they pass everything, they'll receive the certification. There are so many other pieces to it: engine company operations, truck company operations, firefighter safety and survival classes. Those are all things that they'll begin to get over the course of the next year and a half, as well as, and probably the most important, because it's 80% of what we do, emergency medical technician.
Whether they become firefighters or not, the array of training opportunities and the responsibilities that come with them have already convinced many cadets of the value of public service.
Why do you want to be a firefighter?
To be honest, I see this as an opportunity to learn something new, get skills that the ordinary person doesn't have, and I just feel like that would make me a better person. And this program teaches me about honesty and the core, so I feel like that would really help me in my future.
Did this surprise you when she wanted to do this?
As far as firefighter, yes, because she first started to be a registered nurse, but as she started with this program here, she decided more that she wanted to lean towards EMS now.
Those cadets that persevere and eventually keep their communities safe from incendiary harm will no doubt be like Cadet Gary Cullen, a courageous young man possessed of the sheer joy of helping others.
Pulling the hose into it, that takes strength. And then, when you go inside, you can't see nothing, it's like pitch black because of the smoke from the fire. And then fighting the fire, oh, that's crazy, because it goes up to the ceiling and all that, and then you got to do an O-ring, which is like an O pattern to take out the fire. And after that, once you get it down and you take it out, you got to ventilate, which means you got to open the fire so you can let the smoke out. And then, basically, it's just fine.
For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zare.[1050.01][1050.01](APPLAUSE).
Congratulations to those students. We know that we're in the second year of the Cadet Program, just another partnership with the county and giving opportunities to our students. On Saturday, February 16th, District 4, 5, and 6, which would be myself, Ms. Boston, and Ms. Eubanks, hosted a community breakfast in partnership with the Prince George's County PTA Council at Ernest Just Middle School. Parents and community leaders received information on STEM program, Common Core, boundary changes, and an update on the superintendent's search. Yesterday evening, members of the Board of Education attended the Prince George's County Public, Prince George's Public Schools National Board Certified Teachers' Sixth Annual Penning Ceremony. It was held at Newton White Mansion. Twenty-seven teachers who recently achieved National Board Certification from the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards were honored for their accomplishments, and once again, we want to congratulate those teachers who have gone the extra mile to get this certification. Our students, congratulations to the 15-member team of students from Kenmore Middle School. They placed in the top five and won three awards in the 2012-2013 National Engineers' Week Foundation Future City Nationals Finals. This year's competition was themed "Rethink Runoff," which was focused on managing stormwater pollution. Students teamed, student teams designed virtual cities with SimCity4 software, researched and wrote a solution to an engineering problem. There was a panel of judges, and Kenmore proceeded to the finals in Crystal City, Virginia. A moment of silence. Recently, we have lost students to sudden death, violence, and a house fire. Please let us remember those families and students in our thoughts and prayers during this difficult time. Richard Ajibola, a second-grade student at Kettering Elementary School. Charles Walker, ninth-grade student at Sootland High School. Aaron Kidd, a ninth-grade student at Sootland High School. Lauren Santiago, a ninth-grade student at Laurel High School. Jerome DiMarci, Assistant Principal, ninth grade at Fairmont Heights High School. Christine Jones, former Maryland delegate and former Prince George's County Public Schools teacher. Lynn Fitzpatrick, Volunteer Director, Music Department at Eleanor Roosevelt High School. As we recognize the moment of silence, I would also call for action on behalf of the Board of Education. We have stated, and we continue to state, that it hurts our hearts when we lose our students, but it is a community issue, and it's one that we must rally around together to deal with. And we have begun to be in communications with our county execs office and have said to them as well that we would like to see a collective effort on behalf of the police department and the school system and our community to make a difference in the lives of our children. With that, I yield to Dr. Crowley for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Board Chair. Good evening to our Prince George's County community. I'd like to also share some comments with you. This has been a very difficult week of tragic student deaths for us. These are our students. They are part of our community, and I'd like to open by extending our deepest condolences to the family, members of the individuals who were victims of a house fire early this morning. Please know that we are here to support you. Our condolences also go out to the friends and family of Sootland High School students, Charles Walker Jr. and Aaron Kidd during this difficult time. The number of senseless acts of violence against our students continues to grow, and I am deeply saddened by this trend. Although these tragedies occurred in the community, we are working closely with local law enforcement officials to help protect our students both inside and outside of school. I ask that you join us in our efforts to keep our children safe. As Ms. Jacobs said, this is not just a school issue, this is a community issue. This is our community. To this end, there will continue to be an increased presence of security staff and local law enforcement on our school grounds. Grief counselors will also be available for as long as they are needed to assist students and staff in coping with their loss. Sometimes conflict can be diverted with the right tools and the right training. To help students build the skills they need to be effectively, effective in resolving issues with their peers, in the upcoming weeks, we will be launching an anti-violence campaign to increase awareness of conflict resolution and to reiterate the important role students play in staying safe and reporting unsafe events or activities. I would also encourage families to talk to their children at home about what to do in the event of a conflict. As we hopefully wrap up the proposed fiscal year 2014 operating budget process this evening, I'd like to express my heartfelt thanks to our parents, staff, and community members for the critical role you played in developing next year's budget. I am very proud of our efforts to work with our community, to work with our collective bargaining units, and working together to identify the priorities of this community. And I am confident that the 2014 budget reflects the needs of our students and families and also our staff. Two of our schools were visited this week by representatives of the Nepal delegation and the World Food Program. The group visited Mary Has Mother Jones and Glenridge Elementary Schools to learn about the administration of our National School Lunch Program and observe preparation of meals and the food services in action. I'd like to express my thanks to the students and staff at both sites for making this group feel welcome. The award-winning Prince George's County Public Schools Science Bowl is wrapping up its 27th season with just three games remaining before the season finale. Magnolia, Cora Rice, Montpelier, and Roger Heights Elementary Schools will compete against one another on February 26th. The two winning schools from this competition will go on to compete against Glen Arden Woods and Bond Mill Elementary Schools on April 16th to determine the 2013 Elementary Schools Science Bowl champion. On March 26th, four middle school teams, Hyattsville, Greenbelt, Kenmore, and Samuel Ogil will compete against one another. The winner of this round will be named the 2013 Middle Schools Science Bowl Champion. Good luck to all of our Science Bowl teams in the final rounds. Although we are about halfway through the enrollment window, some Prince George's County Public Schools specialty programs and public charter schools are still accepting applications for the 2013-14 school year. Please visit our website for details. And as Board Jacobs said, last night, we had the honor to celebrate 27 teachers who have received National Board Certification. I am proud to announce that Prince George's County Schools is ranked number three in Maryland for the most teachers to achieve National Board Certification in the 2012 cohort, which brings our total number of nationally board certified teachers to 329. Congratulations to our outstanding teachers.[1574.11][1574.11](APPLAUSE). Speaking of teachers, our school district has so many outstanding teachers, why not nominate your favorite for the highest honor for teachers in our state, the Maryland Teacher of the Year Award? The winner of this award will be a spokesperson for education and will go on to compete for the title of National Teacher of the Year. Please visit our website for more information and to download a brochure and application. Nominations are due to the Office of Communications by March 22nd. Prince George's County Public Schools is celebrating African-American History Month. Join in the celebration by taking part in one of the many special events our schools are hosting, or better yet, volunteer to help at one of these events. Contact your neighborhood school for more information, and again, thank you for your ongoing support of our Prince George's County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley, for the superintendent's report. Colleagues, at this time, we are going to deviate just a little bit from the agenda, and we're going to ask that, Dr. Crowley, you introduce Item 6.0 before we do legislative matters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tonight, we have an exciting Apple Award presentation, and I'd like to invite up to the podium Dr. Deborah Mahone, who's the Director of our Department of State and Federal Programs regarding the Apple Distinguished Program Application. Good evening, and I think she will introduce some guests with her.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Dr. Crowley, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I'm very pleased to introduce Ms. Kathleen Richardson, who's standing with me. She is a Development Executive for Apple Education, and she will be presenting the Apple Distinguished Education Award to Prince George's County Public Schools tonight. And this is in honor of the extraordinary work that's being done in four of our Title I Middle Schools. To name them, they are Buck Lodge Middle School, Charles Carroll Middle School, Nicholas Oram Middle School, and William Ward. They have been working over the last two years very earnestly in integrating technology into the curriculum. And we know that the agenda tonight is a very full agenda, so we will be very brief, but my colleague and I will be addressing a few points from a PowerPoint to simply highlight what the purpose of this award is, as well as to acknowledge why these schools are so deserving. And then, with your permission, Dr. Crowley, I would like to invite the principals of the schools and their representatives. We have teacher leaders, as well as, I think, some students in the audience. I'd like to invite them up to join the board for a photo opportunity and to actually receive the Apple Distinguished Award. So with that, I'd like to transition to the keynote presentation, and Ms. Richardson will lead us on the first few slides, and then I will pick up with the data presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Mahone. Greetings, Dr. Crowley, board members, esteemed staff, faculty of all four of the title Middle Schools. I'm very excited to be here, and I can hardly hold my excitement. I've been working with your school district for the past two and a half years, and I have to be honest with you, I have never experienced anything like I have. have to be honest with you, I have never experienced anything like I have over the past two and a half years. It is with greetings from our corporate office and our Vice President, John Couch, and our Vice President of Sales Education, Stephanie Carullo, that we say congratulations for becoming an education recognition program and an Apple Distinguished Program. I would like to quickly go through some of the different tenants of this program and to make everyone here aware as to why your fabulous initiative has been honored this evening. There are several tenants according to this program. This is a K-20, one-to-one. This can be any grade level, but it is school districts or programs that actually showcase how they have made transformational or revolutionary strides in teaching and learning using Apple hardware products and software products as well. This is really something to look at here. Many applied, but few were chosen. There were fewer than 200 schools and programs that were recognized in the United States during this school year, and that is really a huge thing to celebrate this evening. There are five best practices of an Apple Distinguished School and an Apple Distinguished Program, and I would like to quickly go through each one of these and give you a little bit of breadth and depth as to why your initiative has been chosen. The first is visionary leadership, so I would be remiss if I did not say to Dr. Mahone, we call her the mastermind behind this initiative. Dr. Mahone has worked tirelessly to make sure that this initiative was successful at all four of the middle schools, but also how we can continue to grow this initiative to reach more students across the district. Your four principals at each one of the middle schools, they have changed their leadership practices, which has then also transpired to the instructional practices and also matriculated to student achievement. All of your principals have done a great job with leading the charge at their school and being visionary leaders. In addition to your principals, you have awesome vanguard teachers and administrative teams, leadership teams at each one of these schools, who again have worked very, very hard to make sure that all of the students at your school have had a great and awesome time during this initiative. Additionally, the second one is innovative learning and teaching. And so what I want to really point out here is, in a one-to-one initiative, this really allows us the opportunity to have personalized learning, and with this, you all have been showcased not only nationally but internationally for the best practice that have gone on inside of these four middle schools. I went back through my emails today to kind of get an idea of how many times I've been contacted by people from all over the world asking about the best practices in Prince George's. I have received emails from as far as Asia to Canada, also from Los Angeles. Many of you have probably heard that the Los Angeles Unified School District is looking to deploy 600,000 mobile devices, and they are looking to use the blueprint that was used here in Prince George's to model for their one-to-one initiative. And I think that's something really to be celebrated. Additionally, ongoing professional learning. One of the things that was really powerful during this initiative is that your Title One department set out for all of your teachers to have 49 hours of concentrated professional development. There is a statistic from the National Professional Development Staff Registry that states that 49 hours of professional development can then have a 21% student achievement gain. And in the very beginning, your leadership decided that they wanted to see if that was actually true. And I am proud to say that they went far past 21%. We have seen an upwards of 34% student achievement gain from your FAS 1 to your FAS 3 and also with your standardized state test. So again, something to really celebrate. As year two has progressed, you have gone on to create additional professional learning communities, so now your students are able to use these devices to really hone in on STEM profession, as well as something that many of us have heard of as the flipped classroom. Many of your teachers have flipped their classroom and are now getting national recognition. Just a few weeks ago, Arnie Duncan was at the National Digital Day. Some of your teachers were there to actually showcase the best practices that they've been doing with the flipped classroom, and Prince George's was only one of many school districts that was chosen to share those best practices. Compelling evidence of success is number four, and compelling is really an understatement. Again, with all of the success that we've seen in the four middle schools in the area of reading and math, this has really become, again, a national initiative that many others are trying to replicate. Our corporate offices were very impressed with the data. We have asked many of the schools to share the data with us because our corporate marketing department has asked that we share this in all of our actual materials that we share with other school districts across the nations when we do leadership events, and additionally to share these best practices via our Apple Education website. And this, again, is a huge honor. The last one is flexible learning environments. Your teachers, your students have really made a shift in these learning environments. You can go through any of these schools, and you will see students in the hallway, in the floor, outside. They are no longer confined to the four walls of the classroom. You see learning in all different types of manners, collaborative as well. And again, this is something that we are really excited to see. I am very excited to be able to share with you a little bit of data. Dr. Mahone, I think we'll come back up and give you a few points of what we've seen over the past two years with some of the FAS data, but also some anecdotal data. I also want to share that your teachers have been asked, again, by Apple to share and showcase a lot of their courses, as well as the digital content that they've created that can be housed on iTunes U to show what a real best practice one-to-one deployment looks like. So I just want to say kudos to all of you. This has been an extremely wonderful journey for me, and I just really wanted all of you all to know just how hard your teachers have worked, how hard your leaders have worked, and the real transformational and revolutionary change that has happened with your students. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, very briefly, if I may, I would like to address some of the strategies that are ongoing in these four schools that are helping us to sustain the success in these buildings. Some of this has already been addressed by Kathleen, so I'll try not to reiterate any of this, but we all know that digital learning and the integration of technology is here to stay. And as was mentioned before, just this month, our Secretary of Education tweeted that digital learning should be the norm rather than the exception. And we actually did take that too hard, and we also respect a lot of the research that is currently available relative to the importance of professional development. And in a very short period of time, and this was referenced also by Kathleen, because of the number of hours we invested in the TETL initiative, Transforming Education Through Digital Learning, as you can see by this chart, over 800 hours of professional development was documented as far as the training for teachers in these individual schools. We believe that it's not an accident that in our first year last year, we saw a very positive correlation between student achievement on FAS 1, 2, and 3 to the number of professional development hours these teachers received in utilizing the device and integrating the device into the curriculum. The summary basically looks like this. From those four schools, Buck Lodge and Charles Carroll were the first to roll out the one-to-one initiative. They were quickly followed by William Ward and Nicholas Orem. Coincidentally enough, Buck Lodge and Charles Carroll, they engaged their teachers in more professional development, and as a result, they showed the largest gain in student achievement between FAS 1, 2, and 3. So it looks a little bit like this in terms of the breakout. For Buck Lodge, for our sixth grade students last year, you will see that there was an increase in students performing at the advanced level and a decrease in students performing basic. This was a gain of 34 points from FAS 1 to FAS 2. Now, certainly, this is correlational data, but nevertheless, we think it is very impressive. We don't think it's just a coincidence, and we think it's something worth noting. We saw a similar trend at Charles Carroll in sixth grade. Again, there was a significant increase across FAS 1, 2, and 3 for students performing at advanced levels and a decrease in basic. Again, this was a 45% increase across FAS 1 and FAS 2, and the correlations being, of course, that both these schools received a significant amount of professional development that involved the integration of these devices into the curriculum. William Ward, on the other hand, had the greatest achievement in reading across FAS 1, 2, and 3, and their teachers, we think by no accident, received the most professional development in the content area of English Language Arts. They were also more intimately engaged in the use of the creation stations in that particular subject area as well. This, again, resulting in a growth for our seventh grade students at William Ward, a significant increase in advanced achievement and a decrease in basic achievement, an 18-point For school year 2013, we are adjusting the professional development emphasis from the centralized professional development to more targeted school-based professional development and focusing largely on professional development through professional learning communities. And Kathleen did address those. There are five specific professional development opportunities that teachers in these four schools, as well as all teachers in Title One schools, will be involved in this year. The flipped classrooms, again, is a perhaps not as traditional of an approach to instruction. The focus and the guided instruction is provided through videos and interactive technology that children take home and work on at night, and then they return to the classroom in the daytime to be engaged in more differentiated, targeted instruction. We are also developing STEM classrooms focusing, of course, on science, engineering, and math through technology. Many of our teachers will be involved in professional learning communities in which they are supplementing their science curriculum through the use of an interactive science textbook, not replacing the textbook, but supplementing it with interactive engagement. And then finally, a number of our teachers will be involved in Apple Professional Development Authorization Courses. And what this means is that a number of teachers will become experts in the delivery of applications and in the delivery of devices and integrating those devices in an effort to promote student achievement and teacher practice. When all is said and done, this will be, we will have probably 40 professional learning communities with an unlimitous number of teachers participating in many of these PLCs. We're also focusing this year on a lot of anecdotal information from surveys from teachers, from students, from administrators. We know that it is very credible to use as an assessment of student feedback the observations of teachers with respect to how they are performing. So what we've done is pulled, I'll only show a couple of these slides. We administered a number of surveys to teachers and students, both in 2012 and 13. One of the questions we posed to teachers had to do with how they were using their iPads, and you can see with the top portion being 2013, teachers responded that they are using these devices greater across each of those areas. We also asked teachers to comment on how they felt student engagement and motivation was impacted by the devices, and 70% of those teachers surveyed said that they felt that it had increased. Likewise, students made a similar assessment in their survey relative to how they were, if they were motivated to come to school as a result of the integration of the iPads into their classrooms, and 70% of them said that they were. We found surprisingly enough that there was an increase and a change in reading habits from those students who responded, they are reading more, they feel that they are reading, using their iPads more, and they're reading more digital materials. So anecdotal, of course, but still, I think, significant information. Our administrators felt likewise that student engagement had increased, and they feel likewise that student attitudes have improved. So in closing, I would like to simply reiterate something that Secretary Duncan said earlier, and that is, certainly in our 21st century, there's a need to use technology and tools and resources that involve students in a number of learning environments. There's also a need to engage educators more and give them an opportunity to be better prepared with these technologies and these tools. And that's exactly what we did with the TETL initiative. We've only started, this is only our second year, not even a full year, and although we've just gotten started, we think we are transforming the classroom by improving teacher practice, student engagement, and academic achievement. And the ladies and gentlemen behind me are responsible for that. So at this time, I would like to ask the principals to please come up, bring, if you would, a member or two of your staff, and if possible, we would like the Board to join us for the actual award. So James Richardson, principal at Buck Lodge, David Curry, principal at Charles Carroll, Prentice Christian, principal at William Ward, and Teresa Mirafell, principal at Nicholas Orem. Would you please come forward, and also members of Apple, our Title One Technology Team.
Sure.
Yeah. No, we can't be photographed.
Oh, we didn't know that.
The board won't allow us to be. Yeah, they can't, so yeah, that's the banner, so roll it out, if they can hold it in front.
Ellen Luce, the Account Executive with Apple, and Dr. Eric Wood, a new Development Executive with Apple, are presenting the plaque as well as the banner for the picture.
the two people I'm about to announce can come up and hold the banner on either side as well. This week, we found out that out of thousands of those who applied to be an Apple Distinguished Educator for the class of 2013, there was only 75 in the world that were chosen, and two of them hail from Prince George's County, Maryland. So if Mr. James Richardson, Principal of Buck Lodge, principal, and Mrs. Christina Jerome, Title One Technology Specialist, will come forward so we can take another picture, if they will get on either side, this is a huge honor. 75 are only chosen every two years in the entire world, so yay! In the entire world.
of the Board of Education for the great work that you have been doing and continue to do for our students. And I just, Ms. Battle, is Shawna Battle, she is here. I think we should just tape this section of the board meeting and send that to the delegation tomorrow. Okay, oh, Dr. Crowley got up, okay. At this time, Dr. Crowley, did you have some other things you want to? Okay, so we are back on schedule, and we'll bring forth Mr. Lucci. Or maybe we'll send the tape by you, Mr. Lucci. I know you would.
Assemble in front of me, that you should all, we should say to you all, show us your Apple, everybody hold up their Apple. Oh, that was quite an honor. Today is day forty-five of the ninety-day session in Annapolis, and although it's halftime, there's no parades or musical acts, but at least in a football game, usually half the scores are up on the scoreboard at halftime. As of today in Annapolis, of the two thousand and some pieces of legislation that have been introduced in the past forty-five days, not one yet is on the governor's desk, and all the fun happens in the last forty-five days, specifically the last ten days, specifically the last day. Anyway, we have before each other a few more bills for your consideration, a few of them dealing with the security issue. And the first one is House Bill 165, Elementary and Secondary Education Security, School Resource Officers. This would require every county school superintendent to enter into an agreement with the appropriate law enforcement agency to provide a school resource officer for each public elementary and secondary school. Provides additional funding for these school resources that should be paid from the Education Trust Fund, but it does not provide additional funding for the Educational Trust Fund, so it means that other items would have to be cut from the Educational Trust Fund. Educational Trust Fund is the fund funded by the Video Lottery Terminals around the state that's first getting going, and that, those funds are annually given to the school districts or given to the counties. Counties give the money to the school districts, just like they give the rest of the school funding. The fund has not really gotten that big yet, it's just still ramping up. And this would require the school superintendent to negotiate with the appropriate law enforcement agency just the amount of payment for that officer's salary and benefits. In this case, the appropriate agency could be the county police, could be the Sheriff's Department, could be a municipal police, municipal law enforcement agency. But the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and the superintendent and I all recommend opposition to this bill because what it does do is it robs Peter to pay Paul. It takes money and gives it to this one area, but it diverts it from other childhood, classroom enrichment, and so because of that, because it does not have any additional funding, urgent opposition. Do you want to go through all the bills, Madam Chair, or do you want to talk?
No, I think we're going to go ahead and take them one at a time. Colleagues, is there a motion with regard to House Bill 165?
Move to oppose.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, we oppose House Bill 165, discussion? Ms. Epps?
This, my question is to Dr. Crowley. When you gave your security presentation, and I think I asked the question about the partnerships with municipal and local law enforcement, can you just refresh our memory on those arrangements?
Certainly. Currently, we have arrangements with our county police as well as different municipalities in the coordination of security and support to our schools, so some of those measures are already in place. When this bill came forward, one of the things that I said was certainly we are very serious about our commitment to providing safe and secure learning environments for our students. But as we look at our needs across the district, one of the compelling issues that we face is the consistency in terms of our building security, the different kinds of devices and security measures that are in place across schools. So if you'll recall, there were some short-term and long-term recommendations around the security management system and looking at electronic access, panic buttons, and other devices that we think will provide a heightened level of security for our buildings. And so as we look at funding and the impact of this particular bill, we felt that there were some other priorities around security that we needed to look at as a system.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any objections? Any extensions?
Abstain.
Thank you. Next.
House Bill 395 entitled handguns permit qualifications and carrying on school property would allow a county superintendent to designate school guardians to carry a handgun on school property if the person already has a handgun permit. Under current law, a handgun is not permitted on school property unless the person carrying the weapon is a law enforcement officer acting in its official capacity or an individual hired to facilitate or protect the school property. This bill will allow a superintendent to designate an individual such as a principal or a teacher to carry a handgun as long as the principal or teacher has a handgun permit. Superintendent's recommendation is to oppose, so is mine, and so is the Maryland Association of Boards of Education.
Second. All at once.
Third. Okay, the motion on the floor is to oppose House Bill 395. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstentions?
And then the third bill is the last of this three-bill package, House Bill 397, Criminal Law Carrying Weapons on School Property, Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act. Under current law, as I was saying, only a law enforcement officer acting in his or her official capacity can carry a handgun on school grounds. This bill would allow any individual who's authorized to carry a concealed firearm in the state to carry a weapon on school grounds. In other words, any teacher, administrator, parent, who has a gun permit could carry a weapon on school property. Superintendent recommends opposition, so do I, and so does the Maryland Association of Boards of Education.
Move to oppose.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to oppose House Bill 397. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstentions? Next.
The next bill is House Bill 433, also known as Senate Bill 412, Agriculture Lawn, Pestic, Lawn Care Pesticides, Childcare and School Facilities Prohibition. Couple of years ago, the General Assembly established for public schools what's called Integrated Pest Management, where you use a managed pest control program in which methods are integrated and used to keep pests from causing problems, and also you make sure that the pesticides don't cause problems either. This bill would take that one step further and prohibit any pesticide from being used on school grounds unless the Secretary of Agriculture declares an emergency. This law, in my opinion, is, will be far too restrictive in order to be able to maintain the health and safety of the grounds of the schools. So my recommendation is that you oppose this bill. Superintendent's recommendation is, there is no recommendation, and Maryland Association of Boards of Education recommends opposition to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Lucci. Colleagues, is there a motion?
So moved.
Well, what's the motion, Ms.?
To oppose.
I saw move to oppose the bill.
Oppose. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to oppose House Bill 880. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
That's what I meant.
It's 433.
Four thirty.
I think 880 was skipped.
Okay.
Oops.
Yeah, I did. I looked at the number and not the title. House Bill 433, motion is to oppose. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Actually, we go into House Bill 880 next? Sorry. Okay. House Bill 880, Public School Property Acquisition and Sale Requirements and Exemptions. Under current law, a county board of education may only buy land with the approval of the state superintendent. If the board of education no longer requires the use of the school property, the board must transfer the property to the county government. This bill will create an exemption to this provision of the law for the purposes of student-built housing. It would allow local boards of education to acquire and sell the property without the approval of the state superintendent for a program that gives students the opportunity to build a house. The program will require the state superintendent's approval. The bill requires that the house be sold at fair market value and that all proceeds go back into the program. And as you can realize, this bill sounds very similar to a program that's been very, very successful in Prince George's County and operated by the FACS Board. Superintendent recommends support. Maryland Association of Boards of Education has no position at this time, and I strongly recommend support of this bill as well.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we support this legislation. Thank you.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to support House Bill 880. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Next.
House Bill 453, Maryland Center for School Safety. This bill is a part of the governor's gun violence package that establishes the Maryland Center for School Safety at Bowie State University. That's the only difference with the governor's, the governor's package doesn't have it at Bowie State, it has it at a law enforcement location, otherwise it's exactly the same as the governor's proposal to collaborate with the school systems and the state, law enforcement agencies, state and local governments, community organizations, and parent groups to provide recommendations and programs for school safety. The governor has identified money in his budget to fund the center to address school safety concerns. And so my recommendation is to support, the superintendent's recommendation is to support, and that's also the recommendation of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education.
And that would be House Bill 453.
Correct.
Colleagues, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to support House Bill 453. Any discussion? Ms. Epps?
Do you have any information on the fiscal note for this?
I do not. Oh, there's no fiscal note out yet, but what's the governor put in his budget? The total amount for the governor's budget for school security, not just for the center is twenty-five billion dollars, but as to how much is broken out for the center, we don't know.
It's part of the total package. It's in there.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor? Any objections? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Next.
Senate Bill 143, Public Schools Emergency Management Plans Evaluations, is a product of cooperation between the legislature and the Maryland State Department of Education and Maryland Association of Boards of Education. It requires local boards of education to evaluate the effectiveness of emergency management plans in each school, in each public school on November 1st, 2013. Each local board must also submit a report to the State Department of Education on the required evaluation by December 1st, 2013. By January 1st, 2014, MSDU must submit to the General Assembly a report on the emergency management plans in state public schools, recommendations on improving emergency management plan effectiveness, and the cost of the improvements to the emergency management plans. The bill takes effect June 1st, 2013, and terminates after May 31st, 2014. And as I mentioned, the governor, this is also part of the governor's allocation of twenty-five million dollars to pay for this in his budget. And so the superintendent recommends support, and so do I, and Maryland Association of Boards of Education has some technical amendments they're providing, but mainly, but it is primarily a support for the legislation.
I move to support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to support Senate Bill 143. Any discussion? All in favor? Any objections? Abstentions?
Senate Bill 461, Primary and Secondary Education, Online Courses and Services Accessibility, is sponsored by Senator Conway of Baltimore City and is co-sponsored by thirty-nine of her forty-six colleagues in the state senate. Under current law, both the State Department of Education and local boards of education may approve online courses. This bill will require an assessment of whether the online course is accessible to persons with disabilities, including the blind. If it is determined that the online course is not accessible, then MSDU or the local board must develop a method for making the online course accessible. A third party may be hired to perform this assessment. Last year, legislation was passed to greatly expand the access to online courses and gave local boards of education far more authority in terms of bringing them online. And so in this case, the superintendent recommends support of this bill, as do I. The Maryland Association of Boards of Education has not yet taken a position on this bill.
I move to support.
It's been properly moved and seconded to support Senate Bill 461. Discussion, Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you. Could you tell me how this is different from what we're doing now?
Right now, there's this two-step method from the state and the county to approve online education, but there's no such requirement to make sure that that education is accessible for persons with disabilities. So this bill takes a one extra step and requires that before you, in order to use that program, you have to find out, make it in such a way that it would be accessible to people with disabilities, including the blind.
So does that require us to use, only use those programs that are also able by, to be used by the disabled, or can we use similar programs? I mean, can we, let's say we have a program, but it hasn't been adapted to be able to be used by this disabled. On the other hand, there's a very similar program that could be used. We have to use the similar program?
I, looking at the language of the legislation, I think that's something that's left up to interpretation, but I do think that the intent was to allow a similar program, but you just want to make sure that you have that accessibility. I mean, obviously, it can't be the exact same program in all cases as to the non-disabled, but to make sure that there is a way to have that program accessible. So it doesn't say it has to be the identical program, but I believe what it's meant is to have a program that is substantially the same in order that the disabled may access.
Do we know the fiscal note on this?
No fiscal notes been printed yet on this bill.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections?
No.
One? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Next.
Okay. Finally, there are two pieces of local legislation left.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lucci. Four twelve, did we do 412? Senate Bill 412. Lawn care pesticides.
Oh, I had presented that, but maybe we didn't.
I think it was.
It's the same as House Bill 433. So I think in the past, we've had one cover both.
Next.
And then finally, Madam.
Madam Chair, you have it on the agenda listed as two separate items, so I would ask you to please vote on 5.6, just for.
Colleagues, Senate Bill 412. Is there a motion? It's a component to House Bill.
I'll make the motion to approve.
No.
To support.
We opposed that, right?
This is the pesticides, right?
We opposed them.
I'll make the motion to support.
Is there a second to support?
We opposed it.
Okay, so is there a motion to oppose or support?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'll make the motion to oppose.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there properly moved a second that we oppose Senate Bill 412? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay.
And then finally, there are two local bills that have been held for before, and I would recommend, as nothing has yet occurred with those bills, to continue holding them for your consideration.
I'm sorry, would, Mr. Lucci?
I guess PG 40213 and PG 40513. My recommendation would be to continue to hold those.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if any action is necessary to continue. I don't know if any action is necessary to continue the hold.
Okay. Ms. Beck?
I have no problem withholding it, but next time we see this, can we find out what the definition of each business would be assessed this fee? Because it says each business, and I'm wondering if that even includes the Avon sales lady, because that would be a business in the county. And is the sale, I mean, is the fee on a sliding scale so that you'd have the small business up to the large business? And is the fee a one-time fee, or is the fee essentially another tax?
And none of those details are in the legislation. The sponsor said because he was going to authorize the legislation, he would leave those decisions to the council, but he had promised the revamped revised bill, which has not yet materialized in the last 44 days. And so at this point, I'm skeptical that we will see anything else happen with this bill.
Thank you. Okay, so colleagues, we'll hold these two to bring back. Does that conclude your report?
That concludes our report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleagues, for the record, we wanted to put in the record that the Board of Education held emergency legislative agenda meeting on February 13, 2013, to take action on the following bills. PG 411-13, which was a task force on the membership and operation of the Prince George County Board of Education, and PG 404-13, which is Prince George County Board of Education Public High School Outdoor Artificial Turf Fields. It was brought to the board's attention that the bills were going to be discussed in Indianapolis on February 14, 2013. Therefore, it was necessary for us to take action prior to the meeting so that they would have our position. Thank you, Mr. Lucci, for ensuring that that was done. All right, thank you very much. Yield to Dr. Crowley for introduction of consent agenda.
The consent agenda includes items 7.1 to 7.10, which are Before the Board for Approval of Grant Reporting, Proclamations Commemorating Irish Heritage Month, Read Across America Day, History Day Competition, and National Women's History Month, STEM Units Donations, Cortex Adoption for Career Academy Programs, Including Business Education, Computer Software, Health Professionals Completers, Foundations of Medical and Health Science, Business Education, Business Communications, Management, and Finance, and Principles of Business Administration and Management.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I make a move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved that the board adopts the consent agenda, as illustrated by the superintendent. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck? Mr. Burrows? Ms. Depps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Crowley yields you for the budget consent.
Budget consent agenda includes items 8.1 to 8.9, which are Before the Board for Approval of the March 2013 Expenditure Requirements, Financial Review as of December 31, 2013, Change Order for Forestville High School Track, Change Order for Hyattsville Elementary School, Change Order Numbers 1 and 2 for Largo High School Track, Change Order for Oxon Hill High School Track Replacement Part Conversion for University Park Elementary School, and Change Order for Greenbelt Middle School. Members of the board, I would point out 8.2, which is the financial review as of December 31, 2012, and just given some discussions around this particular item as relates to our process in expenditures and information going forward to the county, I'd like to ask our chief financial officer, Mr. Sherrin, just to give us an explanation of this particular item.
Thank you. Mr. Sherrin?
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Board members, good evening. This is the second financial review that's been brought to the board this year. This is again is as of December 31. The reason we're receiving it today is because when the books close as of December 31, it takes a while for the system to be reconciled. Once that gets done, the month end close, basically, that takes all the way through approximately January 20. At that point, the budget management team start working on the analysis. The point of the financial review is to give the board an update as to what actions we need to take. Revenues are changing throughout the year. Expenditure requirements are changing throughout the year. One of the primary functions that the budget team performs is working with department heads across the whole division. As they're doing that, they're making assessments, they're getting feedback. All of that information culminates in this report. And so the, as you can see, it's divided into two parts, both revenues and expenditures. It's also going to affect, as I have talked to the board in previous forums, dealing with some of the fund balance requirements and adjustments in that regard. The, if you turn to page 1 of 3, you'll see some narrative text that covers a pretty wide range of areas throughout the school system involving both the board office and general counsel related to some legal expenses. There's a number of items related to security. There's about four or five items related to the academic side of the house. We have some costs associated with the addressing the MOU. There's an item there that we're going to talk about in terms of requesting the county through your approval, use of OPEB funding. There's several smaller items related to the Human Resources Department and the records management function, as well as the pupil accounting area. There's a couple of items, several items, associated with maintenance and CIP, dealing with the facility side of the school system. There's also an item that's going to address some of the transportation requirements that we have. Additionally, there's several items that are going to talk, speak to requirements that we have related to our IT area, technology, particularly wireless, which also is going to be really a significant items we move forward. So as far as those particular items, I can go in depth in terms of describing each one or several, depending on what the board has in terms of questions. These items, again, are brought to the board's attention because part of the financial management of the system, our obligation is to provide the board with feedback and updates about where we are financially. Our responsibility is to make sure that the school system remains in a positive financial balance, as well as making sure that when it comes to the resources we do have, that they're being used in the most effective way possible. And that's a big reason why this is being brought before the board tonight. This is the first opportunity since December 31, which is about as early as you can get in terms of giving the board a heads-up through the superintendent and his team about different adjustments that we need to make financially. And this list is brought to your attention for your consideration. I'm here to ask or answer any questions you have as you would hopefully approve this item. This will then go to county council. Again, a lot of the adjustments are going to affect both the fund balance as well as the categories. As you know, when the county appropriates resources for the school system, they do so by state law, which is in terms of different categories. These adjustments will affect that category change, and that's why it needs to go to county council for approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I do have two items to be polled, three items, I think, to be polled, to be voted on separate, and then I recognize Ms. Higgins and Ms. Beck.
I'm looking at the document that says financial review as of December 31, and it's saying that a realignment of funds in the amount of $300,000 to support outside legal firm. Wasn't that charged to the general counsel, or could you explain why it was charged to the board office? I mean, I understand the need. I'm just wondering about where it was charged to.
The adjustments that are listed here were predicated on conferences and conferring with the general counsel, as well as some of the caseloads as they're applied to the school system in terms of resources needed to address the legal requirements in terms of caseloads that are facing the district.
I guess I ask, can I ask you, Madam Chair, a question? No? Well, then, the hearing officers, then, it says three, to support outside legal firm. It was my impression that it says the vacant general counsel position. So the vacant general counsel position is in the superintendent's office and not in the board. So that, those two sentences, those three sentences are a bit confusing to me.
And so with the vacant general counsel position, there's been a backlog of different cases that we actually need to handle.
Right.
And so between the general counsel office and the board office, we're trying to consolidate the legal expenditures and their appropriation so that we can cover that backlog to make sure that we are in a good standing throughout the school year, for the rest of the school year.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Ms. Beck?
I guess mine is more of a clarifying question. When we vote on these, I'd like to have 8.3, 8.5, and 8.6 polled so that we can have discussion separately.
Okay.
Three, five, and six.
Those were the three, I think. Oh, I may not have mentioned the numbers. Okay, so why don't we do that? We're going to pull 8.3, which is Forestville Military Academy, 8.5, which is Largo, and 8.6, which is also Largo. And then-
Can we also pull 8.1?
And 8.1. Okay. So to vote on, did you have another question, Ms. Higgins?
Well, actually, I wanted to, 8.4 and 8.9.
So we're just going to vote on them all?
7.51.
Why don't we just vote on-
8.7 looks fine.
Why don't we just vote on them separately? Okay, all right. All right, so let's start with 8.1, Ms. Fellows.
Yes, 8.1 expenditure requirements for March 2013. I'm requesting a detailed budget and expenditure information for this time period for July 1, 2012, through January 31, 2013. The presentation of a monthly data is inadequate for me to be able to understand whether Prince George's school system is in compliance with the Annotated Codes of Maryland, which is directing the board action summary. Specifically, I'm concerned whether the FY 2013 budget year will have a budget surplus or a deficit. Viewing data on an ad hoc basis is difficult, especially since I'm not a budget expert. With the spending of the budget, March budget projections listed in the board's summary, approximately 75% of the budget cycle will have been completed. I'm very concerned that during the last quarter of the budget, which represents 25% of the budget cost, there will be inappropriate actions undertaken to extend funds outside the perimeter of authorized appropriation. I conclude my statement.
Thank you, Ms. Fellows. Colleagues, is there a motion on 8.1?
Make a motion that we adopt 8.1.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that we approve item 8.1. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the roll, Ms. Thompson, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Depps?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And colleagues, on 8.2, we just received an explanation from Dr. Crowley and Mr. Sherrin. Is there a motion on 8.2?
Move to accept.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, Ms. Fellows?
I have some statements for 8.2.
Go ahead.
Okay. This one kind of concerned me. I want to go on record that I believe after having a discussion with the Budget Office of General Assembly Legislative Services and the Audit and Investigation Department of the Prince George County Council that the attached board action is incongruent. The board action summary is an amalgam of three separate distinct budget actions. Further, the board action summary violates Maryland Annotated Codes 5-101 and 5-109. In the opinion of David Van Dyke, the county auditor for the Audit and Investigation Department, the school system is required to initiate a supplemental amendment for, to the FY 2013 operating budget to expend funds that are unliquidated, surplus from the FY 2012 operating budget year. I strongly suggest to my colleagues that this issue be tabled. This board summary action should be discussed in detail with the appropriate budget and financial personnel. Specifically, I'm concerned that the attached budget documents are flawed. I don't think it's proper to spend the next several hours critiquing these flawed budget documents. An example of the incongruence in the overview, which is attached in our information. In the overview, there is an assertion that $10 million is needed to fund OPEB trust fund without the funding documents to explain why the $10 million is needed and when the funds are required to be paid. Further, the overview document states that OPEB fund will be used to support actuarial projections. Are we saying that the $10 million is an underfunding or a trust fund loss or a trust fund expenditure increase? Should there be specificity around the security enhancement being proposed in the board action summary? The overview requires $2,875,870 to support security-related expenditure. It also requires $11,484,945 to support initiatives to provide wireless capabilities in the schools. These numbers were provided by Mr. Bo, the head of security for Prince George County Schools. Where is the design, the construction, and equipment budget estimates that support this $14 million, $360,000, I mean, 14 million, $360,814 endeavor? Are we not creating a procurement nightmare by transferring FY 2012 unliquidated surplus funds into the last quarter of FY 2013, only to have to transfer these funds again into the FY 2014 in August, when the board reconvenes after the summer break? I don't see how our procurement process will allow us to expend $14 million in the four months. Finally, why isn't there a first and second reader requirement on the activation of the $24 million, $360,000, $24 million, $360,815, which will increase the FY 2013 budget to Can our board attorney give us a legal citation that exempts this transaction from a first and second reader requirement? Ms. Abby?
I'll have to pull up the policy. Give me a-
Again, I strongly, again, I strongly request that my colleagues, we table this for a separate meeting. I conclude my statements. Thank you. Mr. Burrows?
There was a lot in that, and it would be really helpful for me if the administration responded. It might be helpful for you if, Ms. Fellows, if you could just ask your questions one at a time, because I would like to hear the responses to what you have to say, but I realize there's a lot in there. You know, where possible, if you could respond.
I'd be more than happy to respond. Please, Ms. Fellows, proceed step by step.
Okay, let me go back to the first question. In the overview of the $10 million is needed for the OPEB trust fund without funding documents. My question was, are we saying that the $10 million is an underfunding or a trust fund loss or a trust fund expenditure increase? That $10 million?
The purpose of tonight's action is for the board to approve a request to county council to increase our appropriation by $10 million. Currently, it's in fund balance. The school system is not allowed to spend that money without it first being appropriated. And since it's not appropriated in the current year, in order for the school system to make a contribution into its OPEB trust fund, we have to get authority to do so. a contribution into its OPEB trust fund, we have to get authority to do so. So, if the school system tonight does not vote to send that item as part of the financial review to County Council, then we would not be able to have the resources to cut a check for the school system's trust fund for OPEB purposes. I would suspect that likely, since we have an audit and we incorporated this in our last audit, that if we don't spend the ten million dollars, the auditors will ask us a question as to why we, we informed the community, as well as all financial readers of our audit and financial statements, that that was our intention and we didn't do so.
Okay. And the next question was around the two million dollars and eleven million dollars. Where's the design and the construction and equipment budget estimates that supports this fourteen million so that we have it in front of us so we can review it?
That, that, that use of unassigned fund balance is described in all of the particular items that are associated with this financial review.
Okay.
Specifically.
I don't see it, so perhaps...
Ma'am, what it represents, it represents increasing the revenue in order for it to be spent. And then, it's in all of those individual little paragraphs, speak to the different areas of where the money's going to be spent. Some of it's going to be spent for, for Board legal services, some's going to be spent for people accounting, some's going to be spent, you know, for all those different purposes that I outlined a few minutes ago.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Harrison?
To respond to the question raised by Ms. Fellows, under Board Policy 9360, the section on consent agenda items includes monthly expenditure approvals and, number two, approval of change of funds among major categories of the Board's approved operating budget where the final approval is required by Prince George's County, of which this falls under. So, the Board policy dictates, there's a separate section for first and second reader, and these two items are under consent agenda.
Call the question.
Call the roll.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Ahmed?
I'm sorry.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, eight point three. I think I lost my name. Eight point three is Forestville Military Academy. Ms. Beck?
I just wanted to vote separately rather than in pack.
Okay. Colleagues, is there a motion on Forestville Military Academy, the running track replacement?
It's not Barrows, it's me.
Ms. Higgins?
Yeah.
Thank you. I had a question, actually, it's similar on all the three tracks, and that's why these changes were not part of the original contract. Why is additional work needed?
The original bond bill was actually just for tracks. Our consultant, Yale Stensler, was able to meet with staff at the state level, and the additional items that are listed for these three items actually can be funded through the bond bill, so these additional items were added. It won't be any additional cost to the school system, it will be paid for through the bond bill.
Okay. That works for me. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Ms. Beck?
So, the original bond bill was ninety thousand dollars for each school, so the additional amount for the Forestville is forty-two thousand additional dollars.
Actually, I'll have to get you the original amount, because then additional funds were also added to those original bond bills. I know one received an additional amount of forty thousand and another one received an additional amount, so they actually varied per school site, so I actually can get that information to you before the conclusion of tonight's meeting.
Okay, but they both started at ninety thousand?
And then additional funds were added for both of those. Correct.
And Forestville is going to have a total of two hundred and ten thousand after this change order?
Correct.
So, clearly, some part of that comes from school system resources.
No. None of those funds will. Everything will be covered through the bond bill.
All two hundred and ten thousand?
Yes, all two hundred and ten. So, that's why I said I'll have to get to you the total amount from the additional bond bills as well, which I can provide.
Right. Okay. I'm going to ask that we table this one until we get the addition, the full breakdown on the bond funding, and then what I'm thinking was additional funding because we've gone over what the bonding was?
Not a problem.
Okay. I don't, I mean, that hasn't happened, but to hold these until the additional financial information is provided.
I have a second.
Eight point two, and then when we get to eight point...
Not eight point two, eight point three.
Eight point three, Forestville, eight point three.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second? A second? All right. Call the roll. Oh, you had a question, Mr. Barrows?
What were the implications of this table? I mean, I know in construction that there are deadlines and timelines that you have to meet when it comes to change orders.
That's a good question. Rupert, I'm not sure if this delay will impact the construction of these additional items, because it wouldn't be brought back to the table until March 7th, correct? Correct.
Good afternoon, Board Chair, Board members. The delay would, I take, if it's be resolved, if it can be resolved very quickly, I don't think it'll be an issue. I think, I do believe what Monica Golds is saying, if we can give you the data you need, the detailed financial disclosure, and have a resolution as early as tomorrow, that will be very helpful.
Right, but we won't be back here.
We won't be back.
But, well, whichever way it could be communicated effectively, I think, to the Board Chair or others, I think we can do so.
We have yet to see if the table...
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to urge my colleagues to, let's vote now on this table and get this done. I see no reason to hold these projects hostage. You know, I trust, oh, is it in your office now?
Yeah.
So, maybe we can get it by the end of the meeting?
Yep.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, well, we're getting close to the end of the meeting, so are we table, well, we have to call for a vote, but it would be tabled till the end of the meeting to be the last action that we take. Call the roll.
Mrs. Beck? Excuse me, before you call the roll, it's got to be clear on the record, are you tabling it until later today and you're going to come back out and vote on it? Are you tabling it until March 7th?
Well, what's the motion, Ms. Beck?
Table until we get to item after public comment. Thirteen.
Ms. Epps?
So, in light of that information, do we still need a vote for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Abstain.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to item eight point four.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved, and second that we approve item eight point four. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Abstain.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eight point five and eight point six. Ms. Beck?
This is the same scenario as eight point three, only this adds tennis courts. So, whereas we were just talking about tracks with the original bond bill, this now scopes up to, from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand to four hundred and eighteen thousand with the addition of the tennis courts. So, I'm making the motion that we table this until after item thirteen point oh.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved to second that we table item eight point five and six until we, until after item thirteen point oh. Call the roll, Ms. Thompson.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Eight point seven.
Move to support.
Is there a second?
There's credit.
It's been properly moved, and second that we support item eight point seven, which is the Oxon Hill Artificial Turf. Call the roll, Ms. Thompson.
Mrs. Beck?
No.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Can you come back to me?
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Abstain.
Ms. Higgins?
No.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Another change order?
Ms. Epps?
Abstain.
Okay, the vote is, is six ayes, two noes, and two abstains. No.
The student can't pass.
I'm sorry. Five ayes.
Still pass. Eight point eight.
Move to accept. Support.
Well, in that case, can we do eight point eight and eight point nine together? No?
Okay, never mind. Eight point eight.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Did I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Boston. It's been properly moved to second that the Board accepts item eight point eight. All in faith, call the roll, Ms. Thompson, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Mrs. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item eight point nine, Ms. Higgins.
Thank you. Could you explain what the change order is and the cost of the change order?
I'm going to have Rupert McCabe come up.
Thank you.
Good evening again. The change order in front of you comprised of several parts direct, and I'm not sure if you have any handout. Twelve different proposed change orders in front of you. Mechanical dockwork, if I can go through all of them, if that's what you want me to. Okay. Change, change order one, in the mix of all, of all twelve, includes dockwork, HVAC systems reworked, security cameras relocation. There's a credit for ten grand of using different type of doors from the manufacturer. And there is also masonry, wall, cast stones, different requirements for curtain wall construction. Some of the walls had to be relocated to accommodate some dockwork in the field. There was some laboratory, the labs in the, in the rooms, for instance, in the computer labs, there was some data wiring that needed some adjustment and accessibility in the field. Also, number seven was some of the windows in the science labs, we had to make some adjustments in the outside of the window with the ledges. The other one was additional louvers in the, some of the doors require for the HVAC system to have transoms so that the air can go, you can see through exactly, and so some doors had to be adjusted. Electrical drawings, there were some, in the field, there were a couple lights that the light heads had to be realigned and based on the field location, as all trades had their different pieces together. The ball field lighting, we had to make some adjustments in the pole foundation, the heights were a little different, seventy feet height. Number eleven was in the gym speakers, you know, so that the speakers don't get destroyed when you play in sports and the ball hits the speakers, you have to put this wire mesh on the, over those speakers, and so that had to be done by owner requested. And lastly, and we had some of the doors, at least two of them needed to have automatic door closures. So, it's, it's about twelve different pieces of the change, and that, summation wise, that's the total cost you see in front of you for one twenty-nine, one fifty, for that entire change in the contract.
It's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand?
Yes, one fifty, yes.
One fifty, okay. I guess, I'm, I have seen a number of change orders with this particular contractor, and so to have mechanical dockwork and HVAC system change orders on some of these things really seem like they should have been part of the original bid. So, I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I would like the administration to maybe prepare by contractor the list of change orders, maybe in the last, this year and last year, rank order in terms of the amount of change orders different contractors have had.
The number and amount, correct.
I'm sorry?
The number and amount.
Well, the number isn't as sufficient, as important to me as the amount. Thank you.
Ms. Epps?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question. So, item, I guess, four has something to do with a cast stone to accommodate a curtain well? What is that?
In, in construction, simple terms, a curtain wall is a structural wall. And it's designed differently from any other type of wall. And on the top of the wall, you have to have this, a different type of material, solid material, to cap, to cap the wall itself, and that's what it meant, yes. That's what that is.
Sounds like HDTV. Okay, I get it. Thank you.
Do we have a motion for eight point nine?
Second.
Ms. Beck?
Could I ask that we consider the change order report that we've just requested follow the last change order report that we had from when Mr. Fryer was here? And he did it by company. Okay, so if we, if we go back, I think that was two years ago, we go back and pick that one up and then just build on top of that, that way it kind of alleviates some of the additional work because the document already exists.
I'm fine with that. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Call the roll, Ms. Thompson, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Colleagues, I just want to add to, to this discussion, and not, not for any particular reason, but just wanted to remind us that our capital improvement program and finance audit and budget meetings are scheduled regularly where we change the process by which we vote on consent agenda items, such that the administration is required to bring these to us prior to a board meeting where there's an actual vote. That does not mean we won't still have questions, but I just wanted to remind us that the CIP and FAB meetings, as of late, have not necessarily included a lot of questions, and I think And I think that we need to use that time as well to make sure that we ask the questions that we have so the administration can either pull or get additional information as we deem it necessary. That being the case, Dr. Crowley, if you could introduce the next item, I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you, Board Chair. Item ten, our unfinished business is a second reader tonight before the board is approval of the school boundary grade and program changes at several of our schools. Prior to the development of this recommendation to the Board of Education and in accordance with Board of Education Policy zero-one-one-three, we conducted a series of public forums to alert the public of the changes being discussed. And the public had an opportunity to provide input. The proposed changes are recommended for implementation for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year. So as a part of framing the, the work tonight and the consideration by the board, I'd like to ask Mr. John Dell Jones Brown to provide us with a short overview of our journey to date. And then we have some additional information that we'd like to share with the board.
Good evening. Board Policy zero-one-one-three authorizes the superintendent to establish a system of school attendance areas which best utilizes the available school facilities. In pursuit of that objective, the superintendent asks pupil accounting and school boundaries to develop a series of alternative adjustments, both program, grade, and, and boundary changes for our discussion with the public. A series of three public hearings were held in terms of, excuse me, let me back up. A series of three public forums were held where those options were discussed and public input was received. Based on that input, the superintendent developed a set of recommendations which were then subject to further notification to the public, including two public hearings that were held here at the Sasser Administration Buildings. Families which would be potentially impacted by the changes were notified by U.S. Postal Mail in addition to robocalls and backpack notices. And there are four changes, areas of change that have been recommended by the superintendent. They include a set of minor boundary changes where ten or more students on a specific street segment would be reassigned to a school that is the same as their neighboring community. There is the consolidation and relocation of the deaf and hearing program which is currently centered at Thomas Claggett with associated students at Thomas Johnson Middle School and Blatonsburg Elementary School. The recommendation is to have that program relocated to Andrew Jackson Middle School. There is the assignment of selected middle school, sixth grades from selected elementary schools to their feeder middle schools. And I'll go into a little bit more detail on that one. And reassignment of a portion of the Oxon Hill High attendance area to Potomac High. In the area of the middle school changes, the sixth grade assigned from elementary to middle school, we identified three different schools that would be potentially impacted. As part of the further public input and consideration of that proposed change, we have proposed, or the superintendent's proposal has been modified to exclude the assignment of the Magnolia Elementary Sixth Grade to Greenbelt Middle School. Some of you will recall that originally last year, that school was proposed to have their sixth grade assigned to Greenbelt Middle School at that time. We proposed at that time to delay implementation to ensure that we did not overcrowd the new facility and to allow adequate time for the school to settle into their new environment. We did receive some concerns regarding the utilization of space in that building and are therefore proposing that that particular change be held again this year and not be implemented for the thirteen, fourteen school year. The other proposed changes, elementary schools, sixth grade to middle schools, we propose that those be pursued. That includes Hydesville Elementary, Rivadale Elementary, Capitol Heights Elementary, and John Bane Elementary. With that summary, again, I'll turn it back to the superintendent.
Thank you. Just a couple of additional comments. Certainly, this has been a journey in terms of engaging our public in conversations about boundary changes. And one of the things that I've repeatedly said is that boundaries can evoke a, a number of emotions and anxiety. And part of our work is to work with our community to assure them that as we're making changes, that we're working together. And that certainly, as we look at these proposed changes, we wanna make sure that it is not just an exercise in moving students, but also working very closely with the schools and looking at programs and looking at opportunities for students to make sure that all of our students are receiving good instruction regardless of the school and that we're working very closely with parents to address any concerns that they have related to the recommended changes. And so as part of this work, particularly with Oxon Hill and Potomac where there's been a lot of discussion, given the new school and the capacity of the new school, we've recommended some movement of students who are currently at Oxon Hill and then students that are currently in middle school that we are proposing go to Potomac. As a part of this recommendation, there have been ongoing meetings within the school as well as between the school and central office staff to make sure that we're working together and that we're identifying any challenges, whether they are facilities related or instructional, as we work together to make sure that there's a smooth transition. And of course, making sure that we're communicating with the staff and schools as well as with our, our community. So this is ongoing work that we will continue to do as a part of the boundary process. With that said, I had an opportunity this week to visit Potomac and spend some time there with the faculty, with the administrators. I spent some time with a group of teachers to talk about the school and to talk about the transition and what it means from a faculty perspective and welcoming our new students. And then had a wonderful time talking with about nine of the students from grades nine through twelve to talk about their experience at Potomac. And so I want to assure our public that we are working very hard to make sure that this is a good transition, that this is a school that is very excited about receiving additional students next year. And we're gonna continue to work with our curriculum and instruction office to make sure that there's the, the rigor and the array of instructional opportunities available to our students. And that we're gonna continue to support this school just as we're supporting all of our schools across the district. And I think the, is Dr. Franklin here? Hello. I'd like to ask Dr. Franklin from Potomac to come up and just to share a couple words with you.
On behalf of the principal, Mrs. Prince, who is recovering from a recent surgery, I'm here to represent the, as I always say, when people ask, what school are you from? My response has always been the same. I'm from Potomac, the best school in the county. And I sincerely believe that and I believe it because of the teachers, the staff, as well as the, the students. We don't refer to our students as students, we call them scholars. We call them scholars because we also believe in them. There are, there are lots of things that I could say about Potomac that you will find on the website. But what I would like to say, you won't find on the website. So I'm going to tell you. Our teachers arrive at school lots of times before seven. I get to school at six. Teachers leave around seven. We put in about fourteen or fifteen hours a day. If you walk into Potomac High School, you will clearly see a different type of school. The teachers are engaged, the students are engaged. The teachers teach rigor, the students understand. We truly believe that it takes a village to make a success. It takes a village. And in our schools, starting with our maintenance department and ending with the principal herself, we do all that we possibly can to prepare our students for college and career. We have a career center where universities and colleges visit the school twice a week throughout the country to support our school and to outline the programs that they have for our students. We have partnered with Lockheed Martin for our students. If they would like to go into technology or aerospace, whatever their, their wishes and desires are, we are there to support them. We have students, actually, we have the teachers who stay, as I said, we spend about fourteen hours, and I'm not joking, in our building. If you come, you will see teachers tutoring. They're not getting paid to do this. They're doing it because they wanna make a difference. The parents see it, we see it, our test scores are seeing it. So I invite parents, I invite the board to come and visit Potomac. You don't need an invitation, we don't need to know that you're coming. Just come and you will truly see a different type of school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, Dr. Franklin, and I'd like to, to share another look at Potomac High School.
Assesses are displayed prominently with increased participation in the taking of the SAT exam as well as a rise in those SAT scores for two straight years. The honor roll at Potomac has gone up as has the number of scholars who scored over three on AP exams.
You see college and career readiness, you see HSA scores posted. You see an information table, you see our vision, mission, and philosophy.
We didn't always have Scholar of the Month, but once we did, it was like students really tried really hard in order to get Scholar of the Month. Like some people would get disappointed if they didn't make Scholar of the Month. And you also see the SAT scores and the HSA scores. Some people really do need to see that in order to know, this is what I need to do, this is how I need to excel.
Well, in principle, Robin Prince took over Potomac three years ago. She made sure to take the motivational messages that line the walls of Potomac to a new level. She doesn't refer to the children as students, but calls them scholars at all times.
I believe if a student feels that they are self-confident in their academics, their athletic prowess, or even how they relate with their community and their teachers, then that becomes instilled inside and it, and it's coming out. And we see those things, just reaching to the highest level.
A helping hand is also given by the many members of the National Honor Society with their focus on success inside and outside the classroom.
It's not just about being smart, you have to show the exhibits of a scholar. You have to do your work constantly. You also have to participate in community service projects. Like it's not somewhere where you can just sit and be like, oh, I'm smart. It's somewhere where you have to give back to your community.
Success beyond their high school days is the goal of the Scholars of the Avid Program at Potomac.
This program is intended to get those C-level, mid-range students, equip them with the strategies and the tools and the skills that would help them to get into college and not only get in, but to stay in once they've been accepted and enrolled.
At Potomac High School, Avid is geared towards the class of two thousand fourteen and the changes in those taking part and their outlook on college is evident to Ms. Oakrim, the program coordinator.
A seriousness about their future goals. They see that it's attainable. I've seen students such as China Robertson, who spoke a little bit earlier, decide within a year's time that she didn't want to go to beauty school. She actually wanted to go to college and get a college education as a result of the information and the resources that she's been taught in this program.
Beginning my fifth grade year, I didn't care. Like I wasn't really focused on my grade point average. And then when I learned more about colleges and what they look for and the good GPAs, and I noticed that my cumulative was very low, I sort of, you know, got more focused and boarded up.
To know that even if I don't get the highest grade point average, that I can still apply for colleges and still be able to achieve, whoa, wow, achieve my goals in life. In Avid, I'm actually learning like what colleges are, we're looking for and what is required to get into colleges, essay-wise, transcript-wise.
Lights, hoots! Outbouts, heeze!
Junior ROTC is another program that is thriving at Potomac High School to help prepare scholars for college through discipline and making sure that they know all their options for post-high school education, both military and non-military.
Obviously, we want them to go to college. And if the college is not a good thing for them to start off with, we let them know that the benefits that they can attain from the military, as I've worked for myself and my co, my coworker, that the military will offer you that opportunity to go and get your college degree. And that's one path that we definitely have the kids take a look at and consider.
Another program that offers structure for the future to scholars at Potomac High School is the Academy of Law, Education, and Public Service. This secondary school reform program has been in place for two years now and is excelling in providing practical experience with quality academic courses that take what they learn in the classroom and apply it to the real world.
It enlightens the child to what's out there as far as the different careers, the pathways that they choose. We try to encourage them by taking them out to site visits, we go to museums, we have guest speakers of their interest to come in and talk to them. Just to make them aware and get them prepared for internships or capstone projects their senior year.
Another source of pride for Potomac is the success of their athletic programs across the board. The Wolverines compete in twenty-two sports and have had twenty-two athletes sign to play collegiately at the Division One A, Division One Double A, and Division Two levels between two thousand nine and two thousand thirteen.
It was a, a college signing day sponsored by ESPN, so our scholars were on TV.
No matter what type of scholar child might be, Potomac High School has a place for them to learn once they step foot inside the school.
We are a close-knit family and we realize what it takes to make the schoolhouse the focal point of the community.
Thank you. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Mr. Barrows?
Dr. Crowley, I wanna sincerely thank you and your staff for making a very difficult situation pretty, as best as it can get, honestly. You know, you've done a phenomenal job at handling this tough situation. I'd also wanted to thank Dr. Franklin for all of her hard work at Potomac. They have a committed administration, Dr. Franklin, and also Ms. Prince. Phenomenal team. And she's right. There are times that, that I've showed up pretty late for a PTSA meeting. Everyone's there, everyone's in the main office, they're always there and they're, they're always committed. Just wanna sincerely thank you. And having Ms. Prince at the meeting that we held at Oxon Hill was so helpful. And her words definitely made parents affected feel more comfortable about the transition. And I'm not sure if that would have occurred if she was not there. So please, you know, tell her to get well, but also let her know how much I appreciated that. Dr. Crowley, I did have, something happened with my Google Chrome, so my screen, the screen's not up. But I, I did want to talk today about, in the, option one B, colleagues would essentially say that if you're a rising ninth and tenth grader, you will transition to Potomac High School and it'll be phased in, in that, in that community. But if you're current junior or senior, you will remain at Oxon Hill, which is, which is, you know, the best thing that we could do. And I agree with the superintendent's recommendation. What I did wanna ask you about was what would, what would the implications be? Or have you considered allowing siblings of, of impacted households to remain at the same school just because you could have a ninth grader and a eleventh grader and essentially, you know, force them to go to two separate schools, two separate PTSAs? Just wanted to see if you considered that and I wanted to talk to you about the practicalities of that.
I'm gonna turn to Ms. Goldson. I know that we did some analysis of siblings and, and I know we came up with a number.
Total of thirty families?
Thirty families. And so I think we would have to look at the impact. Certainly, adding additional students will have an impact in terms of the state-rated capacity of the school, which is about twelve hundred. So any decision to add students beyond what we're proposing certainly would have an impact in terms of space and making accommodations.
Yeah, it's just that, you know, I, I think it's important that we keep families together, keep siblings together, especially, you know, I've had a. especially, you know, I've had several, you know, single mothers reach out to me to talk about the addition of Burton, and how difficult it would be to fully, to be fully engaged in two separate schools. And so, I know we're voting today, but between now and the opening of schools, I would like to have that conversation to keep that option open, even after the vote.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Ms. Higgins?
Thank you very much. Mr. John Dell, my question has to do with the student enrollment at Green Belt Middle. And I certainly understand and support the need to have, not include the sixth graders at Magnolia. And from what I understand, the parents at Magnolia really were ambivalent about going and leaving their Magnolia school because they really do value that experience. When we got recent documentation, though, regarding what the anticipated enrollment is at Green Belt Middle, even without the Magnolia students, could you provide those numbers? Do you have them?
Okay. First of all, let me give a little bit of background in regards to the numbers that you received. The normal process in terms of developing budgets for individual schools starts with a projection in regards to how many students would be enrolled. In the past, two years ago generally, it would be primarily in the March timeframe that those numbers would be developed. We'd have the benefit not only of the September 30th, you know, official enrollment, but we could also see how enrollments developed through the course of the school year. With student-based budgeting, people accounting has been asked to provide projections much earlier than that. The initial estimates were, in fact, developed or delivered just at the start of the school year. And as a result, those numbers are what we would consider very preliminary working numbers. They do not have the full benefit of our intense focus on those projections. But they were provided in terms of giving principals and the student-based budgeting team a starting point in terms of developing their budgets. So it is anticipated, and it has been the case in the past, that the initial estimates would be revised based on feedback that we received from principals, as well as program offices, as well as what our observed numbers are as we enter into the second and third quarter of the school year. For our Green Belt Middle School, the preliminary projection that was provided for that school was one thousand sixty-one students. And that would be an increase of approximately eighty students beyond what their current, what their official September 30th numbers were. Again, that was something that caused us a little bit of concern there. As you probably know from opening other schools, new schools, new buildings, there's a tendency in terms of attracting additional students from the neighborhood, and in terms of that preliminary projection anticipates that potential effect. Again, that is still an early number, but in the, taking some degree of caution, we thought it would be best in terms of, again, postponing the addition of the students from Magnolia at this point in time.
I guess my question has to do with a document that says that Green Belt Middle is anticipated to have a thousand fifty-five students, even without the Magnolia students?
Okay.
Maybe, Ms. Goldson, go ahead. I'm sorry, sir.
I apologize, I didn't hear the question.
Yeah, that it's anticipated that, in the new document that we got yesterday, I think, maybe the day before, it's anticipated that Green Belt Middle is going to have a thousand fifty-five students, even without the Magnolia students.
Correct, that's the preliminary projected enrollment at this time.
And that's an increase of sixty-some, sixty-six, I think, students?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm just going to state the obvious, which those of us who have been in that school knows there's no room for additional sixty-six, which was why the recommendation is not to put the Magnolia sixth graders in there. So I think we're going to face a significant problem. Thank you.
Let me say, I guess, that's something that certainly we're going to be monitoring as a part of the school-opening process and working with schools. I think the second piece in terms of the movement of the Magnolia students, you know, again, you know, it's a process, and we had anticipated that move, but it will not happen. But we'll certainly work with Magnolia to identify some additional resources and supports to the sixth grade as a part of continuing our commitment to them.
They would very much value that attention. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Foster?
This past Saturday, we had a community breakfast where we had a question that was posed to us, or a concern, maybe I should say, around the enrollment in Walker Mill Middle School with the slated students coming from Capitol Heights, John Bane, and William Hall. What exactly are the numbers of the students that will be entering? I mean, they were concerned that once these students come in from these three different schools, that the school would be overcrowded somewhat. I know on paper, we have all this space, but when I visited the school the other day, I mean, the principal was a little concerned because she's not really sure of, we have room for.
That is something that we, again, try and work with the principals in particular in terms of anticipating. Again, we use the state-rated capacity as a starting point in terms of assessing a building's ability to absorb additional students. Generally, we update that using a floor plan and a uses chart that we obtained from the principals in terms of how that facility is actually in use. One of the things that we've observed as we've obtained updated floor utilization plans from principals is that, to some extent, where there is space available, it will be well utilized, even if it is theoretically available according to state-rated capacity. Again, this is in terms of where an extra office, for example, might be created, where, again, are not strictly required, because the space is available, it will be utilized. In regards to Walker Mill, again, we are limiting the number of students that we're adding to that facility. From Capitol Heights, I believe we're adding approximately twelve students. From John Bane, I believe the number is ninety-two? I want to say ninety-two, but let me check that specific number.
You said ninety-two?
Yes, and let me... Forgive me for a moment. I'm sorry, that would be about sixty-five students from that school.
And William Hall?
Again, William Hall is not involved in that adjustment.
On your chart, maybe I misreading this page here where it says...
Yeah, for Walker Mill, there are two schools that are involved in-
From William Hall Academy to Concord Elementary School and Walker Mill Middle School. It's at the third, the second, third page?
I apologize. In talking about the two schools that were directly impacted, I was referring to the sixth-grade additions. There is a minor boundary change, which adds a very limited number of students from William Hall, and I believe that is less than ten students. That's listed under our minor changes. Excuse me, less than five students in that particular instance. And that would be listed under your minor boundary fixes.
So we're talking about maybe around about eighty students, give or take?
That's correct. And again, generally, in terms of, for the minor changes, those would be fill-ins. They would be accommodated completely within existing schools, existing grades. Again, for the Concord, excuse me, for the John Bane and Capitol Heights, those would comprise, again, a sixth grade that would complement the existing tag-sixth grade that exists in the school.
So basically, we're looking at maybe an additional three classrooms at eighty students, roughly. Which, I didn't see, I didn't see any classrooms that was available, but I don't know. When I visited the school the other day, so, please, I mean, what is the capacity of the school? I mean, what is, how many students do we actually have in that school right now?
Okay. Right now, the official, the September 30th official enrollment is approximately six hundred ninety-five students in Walker Mill Middle. It has an official capacity of seven hundred, excuse me, of eight hundred and fifty seats. So theoretically, there would be approximately, again, a hundred and fifty-five seats available to accommodate students. And while that may be generous, we believe that they can accommodate the approximately eighty students that we're proposing here.
Okay. We'll probably visit this again, I'm sure.
Certainly.
Ms. Beck?
I have a question about the incoming Hyattsville Elementary sixth graders into Hyattsville Middle School. When they become sixth graders at Hyattsville Middle School, will the CPA option then be a six, seven, eight option?
Currently, no expansion of the program at Hyattsville Middle is proposed. So the sixth grade would not have that option available to them. They would be available to audition for the CPA program at Thomas Pollin.
And then come back for seventh and eighth?
And if they were accepted and successfully auditioned at Thomas Pollin, they would continue at Thomas Pollin for their middle school career.
So the Hyattsville Elementary, elementary sixth graders currently would have an option of having instrumental music at Hyattsville Elementary. But if we transition them into Hyattsville Middle School, then they lose the option of having, okay, this is what the, I was with all these tag parents last night, and this was one of the expressed concerns, is that they're going to lose some of their arts experience that's afforded to them in the elementary sixth grade when they transition into the middle school sixth grade.
And it may be-
So I asked that question of the principal, and her response is, sixth-grade students will not participate in CPA. This eliminates two different levels of CPA during seventh-grade year. They will have full access to all the general electives taught by the CPA teachers. So they will not be part of the CPA test and program.
Right.
But those teachers actually teach more classes than that, and they'll have full access to that, so...
Okay, so they will benefit from the, benefit from the staff that currently exists?
Exactly.
But if, if there was a proposal to create a sixth-grade component to the CPA there, then that would be a cost element that would have to come to the board?
And I don't think we have room in, John Dell, we don't have room to expand CPA to sixth grade, because remember, that goes to out-of-boundary also.
Right.
I just don't think there's room in that school to expand that program.
Okay, but if there was a push to do six, seven, and eight CPA, then that would change the current model, and that would have to come back to the board? That's what I'm asking, is because then that would be a cost element, adding an additional year onto the CPA program. Who do I go to?
It's my understanding that there's simply not the room in that building to add the sixth grade out-of-boundary students.
Okay.
That's, and John Dell, is that your understanding? When I'm looking at the numbers, I'm just not seeing, I mean, Hyattsville Middle is tight.
Right.
Yeah.
So we'll, I'd like the principal to be able to convey that to the parents who have the concern about losing some of the arts program that's at Hyattsville Elementary.
I actually think that, number one, sixth grade going to middle school opens more options, and the fact that they already have the CPA teachers there, it'll be a very enriched environment. So, yeah, I actually think that message needs to go out to those.
My second question is about the Acakeek Academy, where we have one thousand three hundred and twenty students at Acakeek Academy. It is larger than each one of the high schools in District Nine. It's larger than Largo, it's larger than Friendly, it's larger than Crossland. And you have it, the projection as losing fifty-one students. Is that projection, losing fifty-one students, was that contingent on the original recommendation?
It was not. Again, changes that were subject to board approval were not included in the preliminary projections.
Okay, so the community seems, and I'll share myself with that, that they have a new building coming up, and they're packed, and that's why they moved the fifth graders into Eugene Burrows. But there's an enormous concern with the delay of the new construction, that there will be these, this sea of trailers coming. And so, the Acakeek-boundaried parents were concerned when the boundary proposal eliminated the Potomac Landing piece. And so, what was the specific reason for eliminating the Potomac Landing recommendation?
So when we went back and looked at potentially moving students, we had to look at, number one, looking at the new construction that would take place in that area as it relates to the implementation of a new location at the harbor, and being able to transport those students at that location, and then looking at where we will be once the construction is finished at the new Acakeek facility, to see if we could accommodate those students. So it's off the table at this time, but may need to come back to the table for a subsequent year after we are able to find out what would take place from the new construction of the harbor and the traffic situation that we would be impacted by based on that decision.
Okay, which is similar to what I've been saying, is it's off for now. And in the interim, there were enormous concerns about Oxon Hill Middle School, similar to what you just did for Potomac High School. I think that is a term rebranding, or getting in there and talking about the good things that are going on at Oxon Hill Middle, so that in the future, when clearly something needs to be considered for, for Acakeek Academy, that there is a location that the Potomac Landing community can embrace.
Absolutely, and we started having these discussions as we think about the next step in terms of, there will be other boundary recommendations coming forward in the coming years. And one of the things that we heard from parents was, as a part of the process, trying to get out in front and provide as much information about the recommended schools as possible. And so, as we do this work, we're looking at the timeline in terms of starting earlier, and then how do we have those conversations with the communities that are going to be impacted, so that they get a sense of the range of programs and opportunities that are in the schools? Again, we know that people get attached to their school, and it's a very difficult process to convince them that there are other viable options. And so, we're going to be doing that work, and certainly Oxon Hill Middle School will be part of that discussion, as well as some of the other schools that were in the original recommendations.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fellows?
Thank you. Some of the questions that were raised during some of the public discussions was around the budget, or the dollars, following those students who are being transferred out. Say, for instance, Oxon Hill, if you're losing about four to five hundred children, and given the fact that we're currently going through the budget process now, is that reflected in this proposed budget in 2014, seeing that we do student-based budgeting? Will those dollars follow those children? And how, if in fact it does, I know it's going to be phased in, how would it impact the science and technology program at Oxon Hill? And then, you know, what are we looking at as far as Potomac High School?
So in terms of the budget that principals just received yesterday, no, it's not reflected in that, because we had to wait for a vote in order to be able to look at the total number of students that would move, whether it would be approved, and then once those students are moved, principals will receive another budget.
principals will receive another budget. They get a preliminary budget in February, they'll get another one again in April, and that one will be reflective of the change of those students going from Oxon Hill to Potomac. So those dollars will follow the student in terms of science and tech. That does not affect the science and tech program that's currently at Oxon Hill.
I'd also, um, remind the board that part of the student-based budgeting process is to have the reserve, and part of that reserve is to look at how we support our schools. And we always talk about our smaller schools needing some differentiation there. So as part of planning, um, we're gonna be looking very closely at those schools and the needs of those schools as part of the transition. Um, so student-based budgeting in terms of the actual allocation, and then, um, the reserve, and, um, we've also started having some discussions with Potomac in terms of academic offerings, and I know that they had some real ideas, um, of things that they're interested in as we look forward in building, um, the academies and, 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 and particularly in Potomac. So, um, I would say to you that our goal is to make sure that Oxon Hill continues to have a viable program, and the science and tech is part of that. And then with Potomac, I'm looking at the academies, and we have an existing academy, and then, um, there's a second academy that we're, we're talking about.
I know I came in the mid-cycle of this, just being elected, coming on to the school board, but, um, one of the questions I've always had or was thinking about was the formulas that you use to determine the school boundaries. I mean, are you using census data? We just did some redistricting, that kind of data, because parents are looking at, you know, feeder schools, wanting to have children in closer, you know, going from elementary to middle to high school. Um, and so how are we actually, what is the actual formulas that you use?
There really is not a single formula that's used. The building block of it is a, what we would term a school block. Each of the students is assigned, again, to a residential street or house. There approximately, I think it's something on the order of eight, uh, excuse me. Uh, eight hundred and fifty blocks that students are assigned to. Those blocks are then assigned to a particular school and comprise the attendance area. As a particular block, and it's, it's, again, similar in concept to a, to a census block, but it's a much smaller geography than census block. Again, we also use our own data in terms of where parents are reporting, you know, their, uh, their place of residence. So the information is much more timely than the census data, which is, again, done every ten years, or, uh, only incrementally updated. Uh, we'd also feed into that information on residential development that occurs. Again, we receive feedback from principals about, um, residential developments, subdivisions, et cetera, that are opening in the neighborhoods, changes in multifamily dwellings, apartment complexes, et cetera, closed for renovation or opening up, or, again, changing their, uh, particular target population, and that, again, impacts their population. So we actually observe that on a, um, annual basis, and, uh, also take into account the extent to which students in particular neighborhoods transfer out of that neighborhood to specialty programs, be it French immersion, Montessori, performing arts, talented and gifted programs, et cetera, or our charter schools.
I just, I just wanted to add that, uh, John Dell's projections are remarkably accurate. Uh, in the aggregate, he's within like ninety-eight percent of projection. Now, there is some variability at individual schools, but, um, it's really as, because we watch this really closely, and it's pretty amazing how tight he is.
Thank you. Ms. Waller?
Um, Mrs. Beck, um, answered the questions I had about the, uh, Hyattsville Elementary, um, sixth graders moving on to, um, Hyattsville Middle School, and certainly, uh, in talks with the principal, uh, at Hyattsville Mi- uh, Hyattsville Middle, uh, she has assured us that all students will receive, uh, a creative performing arts instruction across the board. And certainly we understand about the, um, enrollment, enrollment numbers at Hyattsville Middle. But, uh, we are trying to communicate that to the, uh, community, that, uh, we are welcoming them over at Hyattsville Middle, and they are looking forward to working with all the students. Thank you.
Ms. Eubanks?
Yes, um, John Dell, if you would, please repeat what you said earlier about Thomas Johnson Middle School and Bladensburg Elementary, so I can make, make sure that everybody understands.
Currently, the, um, bulk of the students that are involved in our elementary, um, hearing program, Death and Heart of Hearing program are located at Thomas Claggett Elementary School. There's a, also a component, approximately, I think it's four students, that are located at Bladensburg Elementary stu- uh, Elementary School. Those students would be incorporated into that student body and reassigned to Andrew Jackson. The middle school component of our Death and Ha- Heart of Hearing program is located at Thomas Johnson High School, uh, yeah, Middle School. And there are approximately four students that are currently involved in that program. Uh, it's my understanding that, um, I believe, I forget whether it's two or three of the students are currently eighth grades, eighth grade students, and the other is a seventh grade student. Those students would be allowed to complete their, uh, experience at that location, so they would not transition. But any new middle school students would be assigned to the program location at Andrew Jackson.
Thank you, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
Dr. Crowley, um, do these include, um, uh, all of the major program changes, th- this list that we have here?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, the, the reason I ask the questions, because I just, um, you know, I, I just got an email that, um, inviting, inviting parents to, uh, Paint Branch Elementary School because of the Maryland STEM Chinese program. And I remember the board having that discussion, um, talking about it, but we never authorized that to happen, um, or to move forward. Um, and so there, there's a program that the school's having to open hours for that, I thought I would see that, i- if this, if this is accurate, uh, I thought I would see that in, in this document.
So two things. Last year, Paint Branch had a proposal to go to K to eight, and the board rejected it.
Right.
But what they're talking about is, it's part of a race to the top grant to teach STEM, so they actually teach STEM in kindergarten in Chinese. That's the program that they're talking about. So this is actually a grant supported, although we do support it with an FTE, and Capitol Heights has the same grant. So it's a very, very small program, but it's not what you guys voted on last year.
Okay.
Ms. Eubanks?
Can I make a motion to accept the boundary changes?
You may.
I'm doing so.
It's been properly moved, the second that we accept the boundary recommendation, recommended changes by En- Entrim Superintendent Crowley. Any further discussions, seeing none, call the role Ms. Thompson, please.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Barrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Need more information, so no.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. All right, let's see, I think we have two registered speakers. Colleagues, we are at the point of addressing the fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget. Um, we have two registered speakers for public comment. Are you buzzing? Okay. Uh, we have two registered speakers for public comment on agenda items twelve point one, adoption of the fiscal year two thousand fourteen budget, who will speak for three minutes in public comment session. Um, you may not relinquish any of your time to any other registered speaker. Have our first person please come forward, Mr. David Con.
Good evening, I appreciate the courtesy of being able to speak, which is unusual, but we didn't have the questions and answers for the public hearing. I'm glad I had a chance to look at them, because they raise more questions than they answer in some cases. Going back to the student-based budgeting reserve, I thought it was one point three million. It's not. It's seven point nine million. So there must be six point six left over from last year. Is that correct? I don't know. But it seems like an awful lot of money for balancing. If it's needed, wonderful. And balancing is needed, and there have to be some funds that are not yet allocated to schools. But if that's not needed, if that's more than the reasonable estimate of what you need for balancing, then, uh, why not, um, not put this money in, and why not give some of it back from the six point six million if that's possible? In other words, figure out what you need, not what you have and adding to it, but what do you need, and that should be the figure in there. Um, there's an attachment that, uh, lists the professional, um, contract services, and that's just amazing. Um, there's a total of nearly thirty-three million dollars for professional services. Here's one, human capital management went up from a million six plus to two million seven thirty-five, an increase of one million dollars. There's another one in special ed that went up by a million, uh, eight approximately, from, from two oh two three to three seven nine seven. There are gigantic increases and a few decreases in here. It's about time we took a look at these, and particularly on the big ones, and surely there's a need for some outside contracts for professional services. But what of these could we do in-house? If we can do them effectively at a lower cost in-house, we should be, and there ought to be an analysis of that. Moving on, the, um, catering funds that Ms. Beck made reference to, uh, a couple of nights ago. I gather these are Title II funds, they're restricted. I don't know if they're all for training, but an additional, uh, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-four thousand could buy a whole lot of tuna fish sandwiches. And maybe there's better uses for these funds. That's an increase of that amount, not the total amount. And in the current year, there's three point, uh, three hundred and thirty-seven, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand extra that wasn't even budgeted for, and I don't know how you get to spend it. Anyhow, um, I think Ms. Beck's comment was buy books, and I agree with that. We need books. It's important to have the, um, um, what do you call it, electronic media, but books themselves have a value. And libraries are emptying out as books age out. We need a lot more money for our libraries or media centers. And one more thing, but I won't say it now. Thank you, good luck, you do a great job with this.
Mr. Haynes?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Crowley, members of the board. On behalf of the leadership team, uh, Prince George's County Educators Association and the nine thousand employees we represent, I would like to express our gratitude for your efforts on behalf of your employees as you've developed this budget. The children of Prince George's County deserve highly qualified, experienced classroom instructors in every classroom. And the Prince George's County Public Schools need to lower expenditures on recruitment efforts. These two things can only happen together if we forestall the anticipated hemorrhaging of our most qualified teachers to surrounding jurisdictions. Double-digit inflate, uh, double-digit teacher turnover, not seen here since the nineteen ninety, some of us have been around long enough to remember, is an immediate threat to the academic gains we've been experiencing here in Prince George's County. The rate of turnover is bad. That rate of turnover is bad for all parties involved. It's bad for management, it's bad for labor, and it is devastating for the children in Prince George's County. This budget is a step in the right direction. For the first time since two thousand nine, there is cause for cautious optimism for the teaching force. PGCEA understands that you're limited by the fiscal constraints you confront, but we applaud your good faith effort to reinstate some provisions of our negotiated agreement for next year. Such actions are vital to retaining employees and sustaining the steady incremental improvements of the last decade. Finally, we would like to personally thank Dr. Crowley for sitting down and meeting with us to review the budget priorities and recognizing the need to refocus the initial budget plan, and for bringing those changes to the board's attention in the current proposal. Again, thank you all for your efforts on our behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Haynes. Dr. Crowley?
Thank you, Board Chair. Um, this has been quite a process, and, um, what I'd like to do is, um, bring up our PowerPoint. Um, many of these slides will look very familiar, as we've looked at them, um, several times during the course of the, the budget work sessions. Um, but I'd like to work through them very quickly, um, just as a reminder, um, to our board and to our public, um, in terms of the journey about the budget and the work of the budget and all those involved as a part of these proposed recommendations.
Dr. Crowley?
Yes.
Let me apologize. Um, this just happens to be somewhat of an unusual, um, meeting in that we have a lot, a long agenda, but we don't have a lot of speakers. Um, and so I'm going to deviate for a moment, since we don't have a lot of speakers, and call up our public comment speakers for non-agenda items. We have two.
That is fine.
So I, my apologies for getting you started on that.
No problem.
I want to call up Minister Raymond Reed and, um, Willetta Sanders. Please come forward for public comment. We do have two, so I want to go ahead and let them.
Let me say thank you to the chair for making that, uh, commendation, uh, so I appreciate that. Uh, also just wanted to just take a minute to publicly acknowledge and thank the members of the board and the Entrim Superintendent for your steadfastness and leadership during this time of transition in our schools. Um, that's heartfelt. Uh, with so many complaints and still so much work to do, uh, in improvement, I stand to say there's much more to celebrate, and even as witnessed, um, even earlier this evening with the Apple Awards. Um, this year, walking on water with our partnership with, um, PGCS, we've been able to record over one thousand volunteer hours in our local schools. And we've been able to also increase parent involvement through our programs. We are now launching a new, uh, mission to encourage community members, uh, to participate and volunteer, uh, to be registered volunteers with the school board, uh, through our Men in Schools initiative, and we'll lay out that, um, more in the future. Our signature bread-making program, as some of you are familiar with, has received, uh, some funding from nearly all county council members to expand our exposures throughout the county. And we're working diligently to create seamless and working relationships with key, uh, education stakeholders such as Bowie State University, University of Maryland, the William Schmidt Center, as well as other not-for-profit and community organizations. From my last presentation, here's a few of, um, here's what a few teachers had to say, and I'll be quick. Uh, this is at Northview Elementary. The bread-making our school at Northview Elementary was a success. My first graders enjoyed it as well as the parents. It was an awesome experience for the kids. We will definitely do it again next year. And that's, um, first grade teacher, uh, Marvicia Cruz. The students, parents, and teachers love the bread-make experience each year. The students are actively engaged and apply their measurement and listening skills to create their own loaf of bread. I have only positive things to say about bread-make in-school field trip. I do advise you to push up your sleeves, wear an apron, and get ready for a great life experience. And I'll couch the other comments. In addition to our bread-make, we have initiated creation of outdoor classrooms and living learning environments at Templeton Elementary School, and we're just waiting for the spring to continue our work with several other area schools, including but not limited to, uh, Lewisdale, Lamont, District Heights, and Gaywood Elementary Schools. Our Read With Me initiative continues to go well, as we have been reading weekly around and throughout the county. Because of our efforts to demonstrate a hands-on and interdisciplinary approach to learning, um, and bring educational experience, um, practical and make them relative, we are pleased to announce that through partnership, our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Center will soon begin at Carmody Hills, representing the only award in Prince George's County from the Maryland State Department of Education. Again, I say thank you for your hard work, for your patience, and your dedication to keep Maryland schools, uh, not only number one in the state, but also, um, world renowned.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Minister Reed. Willetta Sanders? Okay, uh, colleagues, that concludes our public comment for this evening. Dr. Crowley? Dr. Crowley?
So as part of our overarching vision in Prince George's County Public Schools, we want to make sure that all of our students have the requisite academic preparation and experiences that are necessary to succeed and pursue their post-secondary choices. So how are we going to do that? Part of that is the work that we do every day to support our students, and part of it is making sure that we have the fiscal resources to support our schools. So tonight, we'll talk about our direction, district priorities, our budget focus, revenue projections, explanation of variance, changes in expenditure by category, changes in expenditure by object, and then moving forward. So where we were, so we have progressed as a district to looking at our budget in a number of ways and making sure that we move past looking at staffing ratios to looking at the actual needs of our students and giving our schools the flexibility to design unique instructional models, to make sure that we're transparent in our budget, and we, again, continue to learn lessons about how we can best communicate and engage our community, and then making sure that not only are we compliance-driven, but that we also design our central office to be responsive to support schools and enable a culture of innovation. And this is a display that we started with at the beginning of the process that looks at funding student needs through student-based budgeting. The focal point, again, college and career readiness, and we do that by being innovative in our practices and making sure that we provide a strong system of support to our teachers and other staff in our schools. And then finally, Mr. Sharon talked about fiscal stability and making sure that we continue to look at our finances and that we remain fiscally stable as an organization. Our district priorities are around fund balance, making sure that we strengthen and maintain instruction by redirecting resources to support schools, continuing to invest in our employees, and we do that through employee compensation, and a continued investment in programs. And I've been referencing several of our initiatives around middle college and expansion of middle college, supporting our charter schools, moving forward with secondary school reform, and then looking at alternative education programs and providing a higher level of support and resources to them. So we continue to provide a rigorous instructional program through our budget process, making sure that we are competitive, and part of that is working very closely with our collective bargaining units and looking at our surrounding districts in their recruitment package and making sure that we can be competitive and that we can continue to attract talent to Prince George's County and that we're also retaining the staff that's in the district. We've had a lot of discussion about safety and security, and so this is a priority of our school district, moving forward with our technology initiative and making sure that all of our schools are wireless. And then again, around transportation and our transportation task force work of improving reliability and efficiency of our student transportation system. So as we look at student-based budgeting and the work that we've done, and you think about the fiscal year 2013, you'll see that for this year, student-based allocations were around $411.9 million, and we're recommending $417 million. The reserve fund will remain around the same as this year, around $8 million, for a total of $424.9 million. At the last budget session, I talked about transforming neighborhoods initiatives, and part of that is our collaboration with the county, and there's some allocation represented here of about $6.6 million that will target 35 to 40 schools. We will look specifically at initiatives within those schools around truancy, after-school programs, summer bridge, interventions for third and fifth grade in reading and mathematics, and then ways that we can continue to engage our parents in the education of their children. As we look at revenue projections, again, where we started in fiscal year 2013, you can see the total revenue total of $1.66 billion and then the proposed budget of $1.69. In terms of variance, again, looking at the county contribution and state aid around foundation programs, compensatory aid in transportation, and then board sources, and we talked about the energy performance contract. This display shows you where we started with the superintendent's proposed budget of $1.6, and then along the way, there were a number of recommendations that were made that impacts the fiscal year 2014 budget. As we looked at lease purchase of $6.6, these are things that we could do out of this year's funding. Our transforming neighborhood initiative that's represented here is a plus. We've talked about compensation improvements. The $11.6 is in addition to the funds that are built into the proposed appropriation, the original proposed budget, and that will result in about $23.5 million in compensation. We've had discussions about stipends, and there was an original allocation of $5 million, and from the $5 million, a recommendation that we look at redirecting some of those funds to support tuition reimbursement, salary lane changes, and also stipends for our staff. And again, these are priorities that have been identified with our collective bargaining partners. Student-based budgeting, redirecting additional funds to support our schools, and then Robert Gardner French Immersion, an additional 9.0 positions to support the transition to the new building, which we'll call Green Belt for now, but it will be the Robert Gardner French Immersion program that, I guess, is housed at Green Belt. And then finally, the superintendent's recommended budget of about $1.6 million. And this play just shows you the changes in expenditures by category, and so you can see the delineation across the different areas that total the $1.69, and then by object, and we'll try to bring that up, which is, I would call more the large overview of the fiscal year 2014 budget. And again, you can see the comparison between the 2,000 board-approved budget and the superintendent's recommended budget. Terms of timeline, here we are, February 21st, board meeting where the board has been asked to review and adopt the requested budget. The budget will then move forward to the county on March 1st, and then we'll continue to do that work, which will lead to the June 30th Board of Education-approved budget. Just one additional piece of information. There was some discussion at the last board meeting about Northwestern Visual Performing Arts and the question about the phasing in of that program, and our intent is to phase it in in terms of ninth and 10th graders. The proposed budget had 18 positions, and that was based on full implementation, and it's actually 10 positions. And so we are recommending some redirection of those funds from the 18 to the 10 into some specific line items that will support the Visual Performing Arts program. And also, we believe that it will be possible to fund the recommended increase in media materials from $2 to $4, and so I would put that out for board consideration. And with that, I'll end, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, is there a motion?
I'd like to move on an amendment.
Okay, never mind. Let me, I was trying to figure out. Okay, let me just stop. Hold on. Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you very much. I move that we keep the superintendent's organizational chart in regards to business partnerships and constituent services as reflected and implemented in the fiscal year 13 budget until further board review.
And what are those specific changes, Ms. Higgins?
That would be to have business partnerships remain in student services, constituent services remain under the direct supervision of the superintendent.
Thank you.
And then, and parent engagement would stay in student services.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved, Ms. Epps? Was that you? It's been properly moved and second on Ms. Higgins' motion. Call, any discussion?
Oh, yeah. I would like...
I believe Ms. Higgins is still speaking.
Yeah.
And for clarification, okay, Ms. Higgins, and maybe you'll answer my question.
Sure. The fiscal year 14 proposed structure puts additional duties in the communications division, specifically constituent services and business partnerships, and I've also heard there might be a possibility of parental engagement. And I'm suggesting that we leave the structure as currently reflected in the fiscal year 13 budget regarding these programs, and I do so for several reasons. One is, is that the board currently has established a committee to look at some of these issues, and it may be additionally disruptive to change the structure at this time if the board decides to implement yet another approach. And secondly, I believe that the communication staff is just a critical component to the work that we do, and it's clearly a 24/7 job, and I personally thank the communication staff for all their hard work. However, I see those communications departments' responsibilities as different from these programs, and so I'm recommending that we keep the fiscal year 13 structure until we, as a board, review how we're going to deal with our issues. If you have a question, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Burrows?
Ms. Harrison, for the record, Ms. Higgins mentioned that the board is still in discussion about the direction of a few of the impacted departments in which she's mentioned. So after tonight's vote, if her motion is approved or denied, I just wanted to clarify that we can still continue in that work, even though, you know, even though we've already voted on this part of the budget. We can reconcile after this vote.
As I understand Ms. Higgins' proposed amendment, it doesn't really change the budget itself. It's a hold on transferring offices from one location to another on the organizational chart. So I would agree with you that her proposed amendment would not have any impact on the work itself as far as those offices, they would continue to function as they're functioning now until such time, based on her proposed amendment, that the board and the superintendent come together and reach a final determination.
Yeah, I think, I guess my question was confusing. I guess the point that I'm trying to get at, we're going to vote today, and whether her motion is approved or denied, the board still has the option and reconciliation. If we so chose to move a department, we still have that option. Today is not the last day that we can act.
Your final action on the budget is in June.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that for the, Madam Chair, we talked, you understand what I mean?
I think what, I think what we're getting at here, or I think what Mr. Burrows is getting at here is that, so there, the financial piece is what it is, and so none of that changes in terms of what you're talking about, but shifting one office to another or under another division or something like that could still happen because that would be considered a reorganization or changing the organization chart, but has no budget impact. Does that make sense?
That's exactly what I wanted to be said.
Okay.
I just wanted to be said for the record.
I'm so glad I was able to come at you, sir. Ms. Waller? Great. Ms. Beck?
I would first like to welcome Mr. Williams, our new chief of student services. You came highly recommended to the board, and I look forward to working with you, especially the fact that you came with prior Prince George's County Public School experience. That was very welcome. I do believe that business and community partnerships more appropriately fall under your division, student services. Also, I wanted to restate that the board has a committee where we are reviewing where certain offices fall within the system. That said, I concur with the FY 2013 structure of communications. We have so much work that we need done to reshape our message throughout the district, throughout the state, throughout the country, and now nationally, as we've just heard with this Apple presentation. I think that we are on the right track to getting this message out, but I prefer, and I will be supporting Ms. Higgins' amendment, to leave the structure as it currently stands in student services. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. We have a proposed amendment on the floor.
And I would ask Ms. Thompson to call the roll, except she's not here right now. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call it. All in favor? Oh, here she is. Sorry. I looked over and didn't realize you were gone. The motion is to amend, well, I want you to restate your motion, Ms. Higgins.
To restate it? To retain the organizational structures reflected in the fiscal year 13 budget regarding constituent services and business partnerships.
Thank you. Call the roll, Ms. Thompson, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
No.
My time is up. I can't vote.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye, since the committee is still working on it. Okay.
Okay, the motion passes.
Colleagues, entertain another motion if there is one. I suspect there is. Ms. Burrows?
Dr. Crowley, you know, I realize we're in student-based budgeting and secondary school reform, but whenever there's a program, whenever there are programs being removed from, you know, schools in our districts, it's important that we know. And it was, you know, shockingly brought to my attention that the nursing program, which has historically been at Crossland, is being moved to Laurel and another site as well. And so I just wanted, I just wanted to talk to you about that shift and also possibly, based on your response to offering amendment.
I asked Dr. Aubregas to talk about some of the movement about academies, and I know that there was a question about the nursing program and changes in the nursing program and what we're trying to do in terms of one-year to four-years.
The, we're trying to bring all our programs in line with career pathways associated with MSDE. And MSDE actually approves some of the CIP work for secondary school reform. They're not particularly happy with a one-year program for nursing. They prefer the four-year program. Crossland has a one-year program, as does a couple other schools who are phasing out the one-year program and going to four-year programs. Now, Crossland has six kids enrolled in their one-year program.
Right.
We'll have three schools that will have the four-year program, Wise, Laurel, and Sutland. Each one of those will be associated with a hospital for internships. So it's actually, so even, even in culinary arts or in many of the other academies, we're actually phasing out courses as you know them today and replacing them with courses that are approved with MSDE, and nursing is one of those.
And so I understand that, and that sounds like, you know, a great idea, but why move it from, from Crossland with the...
So, let's talk about the numbers.
So, you know, and I had the same issue with when it came to ROTC. You know, we tell principals to stop recruiting for ROTC years in advance, and then when they do, we shut them down, and we say it's because of low enrollment. And that's exactly what happened with the Crossland ROTC program, and it happened, you know, system-wide. We told them, stop recruiting, you cannot enter... We told them, stop recruiting, you cannot enter, you cannot allow any, you know, new cadets in the program. Some principals did that, some didn't. The ones that did, you know.
So Crossland's had the lowest enrolled ROTC program for the last three years, before we even started secondary school reform.
But, but they, they were told that to stop recruiting cadets.
Only last year. I, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I get that. And I think moving programs are, are difficult. You have history, you have teachers who have.
Taken two programs out of school in the same year.
I hear you.
Just want to add, Dr. Aubregas talked about changes in the academy as we work with the state and as we develop the pathways and strengthen some of our academies. One of the documents that he provided was a chart that delineated the, the changes that are coming in terms of academies. And I think that that is information to bring back to the Board for some discussion, so that we are aware of the direction that we're moving in as a district, and certainly for you to have an opportunity to ask questions. And the nursing was one of those recommended changes. So we want to make sure that you get that information.
So when, when we see that, that if a program's in jeopardy of being removed because of low enrollment, when is that, for example, the nursing program? When was that communicated to the principal? And, and when do we, as central offices, begin to, to provide some sort of intervention this, to let the school know, if you don't have a certain amount of numbers, we're going to shut down your program, we're going to move your program?
So that's actually not quite accurate. So it's not just driven, number one, it's driven by the efficacy of the program itself, and whether it's compared to the Maryland State Career Pathways. So the one-year program was not going to last regardless of the enrollment. There could be a thousand kids in it, and we'd still have to change it to a four-year program. All of these discussions really began last year. None of the decisions that we're making this year are news to the school teams, to the administrators. So in two thousand nine-ten was the beginning of secondary school reform. That's when we did all the surveys, you guys remember all those evening meetings. And that's when we determined which programs we were going to start building across the geographic ranges. Then, in two thousand ten-eleven, we started the school meetings. So for the last two and a half years, we've been meeting with each school, talking about what the impact is going to be on the programs. And we have made changes. I mean, what was proposed two years ago has been modified, and schools have had input into their programs. For example, Crossland has the Expanding Global Studies Program. And that fits beautifully with their IB program. So, which we are now supporting. They created it, but we're now supporting it. So we, we're really trying real hard to make sure that we build programs that are, number one, aligned with MSD. Number two, aligned with what the current workforce says. Number three, aligned with what we can afford and what the interest has been. So there is some growing pains, without a doubt, and I, and I get that, and I hear that. But when I look at what, what's coming, for example, they didn't mention it tonight, but the Homeland Security Program at Potomac is amazing. But it's still, it's two years down the road.
Right.
So what we're trying to bring in are real programs related to real jobs for kids. And, and I'm pretty proud of the work that we've done, but you're right, there has been some growing pains. And I, I get that Crossland is concerned about losing the nursing program, and, and there's a shift in the Culinary Arts Program, so they're going to go to the Pro Start.
Right.
So they'll still have it, but it'll just look, the coursework will look different.
Ms. Fellows?
I'm going to be referencing three of our budget documents, which is our CAFR, the fiscal year end in twenty, June twentieth, I mean, June thirtieth of two thousand twelve, our proposed budget. And also our FY twenty thirteen, just to let you know the reference tools that I'm using. Before we finalize the adoption of the two thousand fourteen budget in the amount of one billion, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, two, six hundred seventy-nine million, two hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars, I want to make some statements and raise some questions. And I want them to be a part of the public record. The one billion, I'm just going to say one point six billion dollars that's being proposed, it's not an accurate and fully disclosed cost of the Prince George's County School System for FY two thousand fourteen. The reason why I state this is because what is represented in the FY two thousand twelve Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which states that the total cost of services for FY two thousand twelve was one billion, nine hundred eighty-six million, two hundred ten thousand. In the proposed FY two thousand fourteen Operating Budget Book, it reflects the operating budget for FY two thousand twelve was one billion, six hundred thirty-two million, one thousand five hundred eighty-one. When you subtract what was in the proposed FY two thousand fourteen Operating Budget Book, found on the transmit letter from Dr. Crowley, from the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is on page fourteen, the difference is about three hundred fifty-four million dollars, two, three hundred fifty-four million, two hundred eight thousand, four hundred nineteen dollars. Therefore, my first question, I raise the question for the public record. Is there hundreds of millions of dollars that will be expended in FY two thousand fourteen, which will not be disclosed to the public? Which will not be voted on by the Board? Which will not be reviewed and approved by the county executive and the county council? That's a, that's a concern of mine. Next one. Further, is my understanding that the difference between total costs and general fund dollars for FY two thousand eleven was in excess of four hundred million dollars? Also, for the FY two thousand thirteen, is there hundreds of millions of dollars of costs being expended above the operating authorization budget of one billion, six hundred sixty-four million, four hundred forty-two thousand? Does the school have the responsibility of producing a non-operating budget, I mean, a non-operating fund budget book? This non-operating budget book would be a guided list, listing and explanation of programs, activities, and costs, which are independent and separate from the operating budget. Therefore, I'm formally requesting a listing of non-operating budget-funded activities for FY two thousand thirteen and planned for FY two thousand fourteen. I'm making the assumption that these expenditures are not in the general fund. Therefore, I'm requesting a list of what categorical fund these dollars are placed in, the Oracle system. What is the responsibility center that is expending these funds? And what is the revenue source coding for ensuring proper alignment of funding source to programmatic activities? Like I said, this will be in the public record for a response.
Yield to Dr. Crowley, Mr. Shear?
Appreciate the chance to speak to your questions, although they were kind of hard to pick apart because they were kind of, they kind of bled into each other.
Okay.
What I would, what I, what I would say to, to you and to the members of the Board and to the community in Prince George's County is that as the, as the, as the financial plan is put together, it is a, an extensive process. When we estimate revenues, we do that with due diligence and working with partners, particularly at the state and the local level, county government. When we're putting together our spending plans, which are included in the, in the, in the printed document, that's on the web for all, all to see, the, the budget process is separate and apart and totally distinct from the annual financial report, which is the CAFR. Those are, those are two different processes. One is, one is the budget, which is being developed for operating the school system and all its component parts. And then at the end, you have a, an accounting of the results of the financial operations of the district. Those are two different things. To try to take one and compare it to another is awkward at best. And so I just would, we just would say that at any point in time, you or any member of the Board wishes to come to my office or the Budget Office, I will spend whatever amount of time the Superintendent allows me to spend to describe and discuss extensively the CAFR or the budget document. Where the particular parts come from, how it's tied to our code structure in Oracle, or any, any dimension you'd like to talk to, I have questions about.
The only thing that I would add is, as part of this budget process, from the beginning to where we are now, we have worked our best to be transparent in our communication to this Board and transparent to our community. This budget has been put together with the best information that we have available in terms of what we think we're going to get from the state in terms of revenue, what we think we're going to get from the county based on information shared with us and some discussions with them, and then looking at our internal resources as a school district and developing what we think is a budget that reflects the needs of our students. And so I would say to you, if there are questions about any particular elements of the budget, we're happy to sit with you, as well as any Board member. I believe at every meeting that we've had, I've shown a display that delineates the budget in terms of the operating budget for the school district. Certainly, there are funds that come to us through grants raised to the top. And again, there are specific line items that we're held to from an accountability perspective of how those dollars are spent. But the budget that I am proposing to the Board is the budget that I presented since the beginning of this process, and any changes, which we've termed as enhancements or variances, we have put that information up for the Board to see, to discuss, to reflect, and provide input, and certainly for our community. So again, I would say to you, if there are elements of this that are confusing or you have concerns about, we're certainly happy as a team to sit with you or other members of the Board to provide clarification.
I think I stated what my concerns were, and, and thank you for your responses. And so I'll send this to you electronically, so you'll have it as well, but again, it's on public record. Thank you.
Dr. Crowley, you know, I, I would like to also, though, there was, there was a mention, I think, earlier by my colleague, Ms. Fellows, a specific name of a person in the county council. I think that, that you referenced in terms of their, what they accounted in terms of the Board's responsibility to, to send documents over and get it approved. I just can't remember who it was at the time, but.
I believe the name was Mr. Van Dyke.
Okay, yes. That's also on the public record, and that person's name was mentioned. So I would actually ask that staff make contact with that individual to get, to ascertain the, the comments that he apparently has made, or I don't want to make an apparent assumption, but I would like to hear from that individual with regard to what he is stating regarding this process specifically. I would like for him, and don't, I'm not, I mean, I don't want to misstate, but say exactly what was said here at this meeting to, and get a response from him relative to that, please. In addition to that, I just wanted to note that in the TNI part of our, of what you've added, I, I think that's a great thing for, for those areas. I would just ask that by the time we do the reconciliation, that the Board work with the county to have a actual process by which we will assess the progress of where the money is going and how it's, how it's working. So I wanted to have something formally developed relative to that, so that by the time June thirtieth comes, we know we'll have something in place for that.
And, and I would agree with you in our plan, and again, we're having some preliminary discussions, but would hope that as we define the specific allocations and where those dollars are going and how they're supporting our schools, that there will be some regular reporting back to the Board, as well as at the county level, so that we have a sense of utilization of resources and whether we're being efficient in the use of those resources. And most importantly, are they effective in terms of the recommended actions?
Thank you. Ms. Boston? Oh, Ms. Higgins, and then Ms. Beck?
Yes, I would also like it put on the public record that I take great offense with Ms. Fellows' questions that are accusatory, spread false information, and clearly communicate that you're confused, unknowledgeable, and, and give very unfounded.
I think that's very inappropriate.
Excuse me, I'm talking.
I'm sorry, but I think it's very inappropriate.
Thank you.
These are questions that I have, and they are not confusing. And they are questions that I have. You may have your questions, Ms. Higgins, but I have my own. If I'm confused, let me get clarity. But I don't think it's appropriate for you to say to me, or into, on public record, that you find my question is accusatory. I'm asking a question because it's my fiduciary responsibility to do so. That's what I was elected to do.
So noted, Ms. Fellows.
Your, your comments are inappropriate.
Ms. Fellows, so noted.
So talking about a budget where hide, money is being hide, hid, is really very offensive to me personally. And I find it even more heart, disheartening that if there was an interest in any of the responses, that they could have got, been gotten at any one of the three budget work sessions that were held that you chose not to attend. Thank you.
Ms. Beck? I just want to restate that I had some questions from the Tuesday work session that were more than just that, the pending number nine. And I want to just know that those are still in process. Number nine was the one, compare the student-based budgeting by school, that table.
That, that response has been provided, it's on, it's on board docs.
I received that. One of the other questions I had was about the ROTC salary table, where one was just so far out of whack from the others.
We, we did provide a response to that as well.
Okay, I haven't seen that. Was that part of the?
It's part of the package in terms of number sequence.
Okay.
By school and the salaries.
It delineated the number of FTEs, the job title, like Lieutenant Colonel, or.
Right.
And then there was an associated dollar amount to that as well.
Okay, I might need help finding that, because I've, I've only been looking at the, the student-based budgeting massive table. And was the chart for middle college by school also provided? The middle college students that come by school, rather than just the dot table?
Yes, yes.
That's in here too?
It was by district.
Right, it was by district, and it was by school, so that you could see the specific schools in which students are coming from as part of the middle college.
Okay.
It's, it's in there.
I wanted to follow up with Edward Burrow's comments about secondary school reform. And, and I received the same email about, you know, moving the nursing program. But when you explained it, you said that the nursing program would be aligned with a hospital. Moving the nursing program to Sutland is nine miles from Southern Maryland Hospital. It's six miles from Crossland, and it's two miles from Suratsville. So if we're aligning with a hospital, I would think that we would align geographically so that the students would be nearer to a high school? I think that would be one of the components.
So I actually don't have an answer as to which hospital they're aligned to, but I can get that for you by tomorrow.
And finally, when we were going through the whole discussion of the budget, I, I was questioning athletics and the fifty-dollar athletic fee. It, it was a concern to me when Ms. Golson said that some kids couldn't afford to just outright pay this fee. Clearly, we know that. But kids who can't afford to just outright pay the fifty dollars are probably the kids that really need to be in athletics. And, and personally, I would want to see us going to either restructuring that fee, either to going to a twenty-five-dollar fee, going to a no fee would really be my preference, because it, it really bothers me, knowing the disaster that we're having right now with our student population, that maybe one of those kids didn't participate in athletics because of the fee barrier. And I know that we're doing some exemptions for the fee. But I did not see, in looking at what we've collected, that we could not just either eliminate that or revisit it for another discussion.
I just want to clarify, we, to our knowledge, we have no cases where students made us aware that they had a problem paying the fee and then could not participate in the sport. We made every accommodation to ensure that they did participate. But we did have a conversation. We are closely looking at the feasibility of removing that fee, but then determining where we could capture the funds to pay. that fee, but then determining where we could capture the funds to pay for the expenditures that are, that are paid for now, with the use of that fee. And we're hopeful that after an extensive analysis, we just didn't have the time we needed to do that, but we should be able to have a response back, when we come back to the table by May for sure, about whether to keep that or not. But we did have a conversation about it.
And, and I know, and I'll use my example, I had four children in school all at the same time, so if my kids were all looking to play athletics, you know, I would have come up with this money, but then on top of it, you're looking at supporting for uniforms, you're looking at the equipment that they need, the transportation, and, and funding a student in athletic is a big commitment already for parents, and it's a multiple commitment, if you have many children. And, so that's why I'm asking for assistance to revisit the $50 fee.
Our plan is to revisit it, just given some of the discussion at the table at our last meeting, and as Ms. Golson said, we had a meeting today to talk about the fees, and the recommendation that came out of that meeting was, this was going to be a study issue, that we would look at the impact of a decision, either to eliminate the fee, and then how we make up those costs, or if we looked at a different fee configuration, whether it's half, or whether there's some flexibility, where if a family had hardship, we would make some accommodations. So, we will be coming back to the Board with some recommendations on this issue.
Thank you.
Ms. Foster?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2014 budget.
I second it.
It's been properly moved, and second to adopt the FY 14 budget, as proposed by Superintendent and staff. Ms. Thompson, call the roll, please.
Ms. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Mrs. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
No.
Ms. Higgins?
Yes.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I want to commend the budget staff that's sitting out there, who has to do the hard work to get this together. So, we, yeah, it's, it's late, and you've been here all day like the rest of us, but we know that it's been a tough, a tough time, not just this year, in terms of this budget, but you've had to make some, some crazy things happen over the last several years, so we really appreciate your work. Mr. Sharon, I want to say again, on behalf of the Board, thank you for stepping in at a time that the Board definitely needed, needed that sort of help, and we appreciate all that the Executive Cabinet, in general, has done relative to this fiscal year, and we have a lot more work to do, but this is a big thing that we got to get through. Dr. Crowley?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank the Board for their support through this process. It has been, you know, as a first-time Superintendent, it's been a very enlightening process, there have been a lot of lessons learned, so I want to thank you for your support. And I really want to thank the staff for all of the hours and hours of time, the Saturdays, the getting the calls from me at 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, about budget questions, and so, I really want to thank them, and certainly thank the Executive Cabinet for the good thinking leading to the Superintendent's proposed budget. This is a collective effort, and this is about the work in relationship to our students. And so, I am hopeful that the decisions that we have made will benefit our students. And then, finally, I want to say that we're at what I call a benchmark in the process. There is still much more work to do, and talk to the Cabinet about the process going forward. And so, part of that process is to debrief lessons learned, and ways in which we can improve our process, to improve our engagement of the community, and also to look specifically at ways in which we can provide more outcome data to inform decision-making. And so, we will be coming back to you with some additional recommendations around looking specifically at some of our initiatives and outcomes. Certainly, secondary school reform will be a part of that discussion. Just going to put this out there now, looking forward to look at pre kindergarten, and some challenges that we have there, and ways in which we can build those early learning experiences for our students. So, just want to take this opportunity to thank our public for their input, and we want you to stay involved, and we want you to give us feedback. Sometimes it's difficult to hear it, but this makes us grow, this makes us a stronger school system. So, thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Crowley.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, you need to take, you need a motion to take items 8.3, 8.5, and 8.6 off the table, so that you can then have your discussion.
Yes, ma'am. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
And properly move the second to take items, those items, three items, off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Abstent, singing none, motion passed.
Thank you for the opportunity to provide the updated information. So, for, in May 2011, our initial discussion was about a $90,000 in-kind, and the bond bill was going to be $90,000. But then by February 6th, that in-kind had changed to in-kind real property, if the Board member recalls. And then, the grant for both, the bond bill grant for both Forestville and Largo, at that time, was $180,000 total, for both sites. January 28th, we received additional bond bill funding. Forestville received an additional $50,000, which brought their total to $230,000, and Largo received an additional $225,000, which brought their bond bill to $405,000. So, that now brings me to each of these Board Action Summits, so let me go individually. So, for 8.3, the total for Forestville here with the change orders would be $210,837, which would be less than the total amount of the bond bill. And for item one, which, for the additional work of the scope requested, that was $28,950, and that work has already been completed. And then, for item number two, no work has started on that, but that totals $12,975. When you add those two together, they come up with the $41,925 for the total amount for the current change order. And once again, it would be covered through the bond bill, because the total amount of that bond bill is $230 for Forestville, and this amount totals $210. So, that's for 8.3. You have any questions? Okay. Let me move on to 8.5. So, 8.5, the total amount for Largo is a total of $405,000. As you can see here, with the change order amount, the total will come up to $313,000, approximately, which is less than what the total for the bond bill will be. And let me go through each item listed below. The number one, for additional work, is, has been completed, and that was $15,953. For number two, that has been completed, it was $6,500. Number three has been completed, that was $48,500. Number four has been completed, that was $43,500. And number five, no work has started, but it is eligible, and will be covered under the bond bill, and that's a total of $19,650. When you add all those together, that gives you the $134,103 that's requested in the change order. And once again, that's under the total amount for that bond bill, which is $405,000. Any questions for 8.5?
No.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected for 8.6. 8.6 will cost an additional $105,000, $105,115. The funds will come out of major repairs in CIP. Please note, it also is listed on our FY 2014 list of items that have been presented to CIP, which totals over $90 million. So, we have it covered possibly here, and if we don't get the funding in 2014, but it's listed there as well. And this is not eligible, even though we do have some remaining funds in the Largo amount for their bond bill, because that total was $405,000. The tennis courts unfortunately are not eligible, which is why it's in a separate budget action summary, and not included on 8.5. Questions?
Madam Chair? So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Is that a move approval?
Yeah.
And it was properly second. Discussion, Ms. Beck? Calling the roll.
I shouldn't. All right. Let me, let me just say something. This, the bond process to circumvent the CIP itemization is, is something that really, I hope our Senators are watching, because this is the new way to get your projects funded, is going the bond route. And, and now we see, you go, you go bonds, and you get your, and I'm going to say, smaller projects done, but, you know, you can bet I'm going to be calling my Senator, and I'm going to be saying, where's my bond bill? Because we don't have a tennis court at Frederick Douglass High School. We haven't had since my children were there in the 90s. But now, I see how to get a tennis court.
Well, please note that the tennis court actually is not eligible unless, because these two bond bills were about track, so you would have to request a bond bill specifically for tennis courts.
The bond bill will say tennis court, Frederick Douglass High School. And then, it'll go right next to the artificial field. And then, I can retire, because the capital improvement plan is already being done somewhere else.
Call the roll, Ms. Thompson?
It's late, thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Epps?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Fellows?
Call abstain.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank the Lord. Now, we have to go back to, you forgot, didn't you, executive session, and so, we, that concludes our public session. Thank you all for your participation. See you next time, which is March 7th, I believe.